Welcome to. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the. May twenty eighth meeting of the Portsmouth School Board. Welcome, everyone. We're happy you're all here. Happy to have everyone that's out there in the audience watching us. Can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Elizabeth Barrett.
Here.
Pip Clues.
Here.
Tish Campbell.
Here.
Carrie Nolte.
Here.
Brian French.
Here.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yeah.
Lisa Rappaport.
Here.
Lee Hudson.
Here.
Byron Maddow.
Here.
Rick Hugener.
Here.
Nathan Delaney.
Here.
Thanks, yeah. There you go. Yeah, in person, too. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation under God, ruled with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Announcements and recognitions. Do we have anything that anyone would like to report on?
I don't have anything, I would say, not specific. The, uh, we, this is just a time of year, we have so much happening. Every evening is something, whether it's, uh, All City Sings, uh, we just hosted a, a major, uh, track meet. One of the biggest track meets we've ever hosted, and I think our teams did very well. And then our, our, um, our team that ran it, uh, was feeling pretty good about it to no cause, was really good about, about how we've, uh, done. Lots, lots of students winning awards. We're in a period of time where we're getting a lot of award nights coming up. I hope, you know, people get out and, and see those things, because this time of year, we're, we're recognizing a lot of, uh, students for their accomplishments over the course of the past, past year. And, uh, yeah, I think that's it for me.
Okay, we went to the CTE Awards.
We did go.
You and I were there.
Yes.
That's always impressive. It's the students that are involved in the CTE program, and we give certificates and recognition to students that have done outstanding. And that was really exciting. So it's, it is, it's a busy time of year.
It is.
And, uh, hopefully if you can take advantage of any of it and attend any of it, our graduation is June sixth, June eighth.
What's the difference? I think you got.
But members are always welcome to come to graduation. I think you probably all got an invitation, so, um, if you can come, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good one, hopefully outside. It's wonderful if it can be outside. You're there every year, correct? So it's a good, good event.
I wanted to mention something if you were done.
Go ahead.
Um, and I know I emailed some of the, um, board about it, but I did want to mention that about six weeks ago, Stan Leiford was recognized at, on, um, US Congress floor by, um, our representative Pappas for his, uh, many years of service to, um, the Portsmouth School Department. So I thought it was pretty, pretty impressive, and we're lucky to have him.
Can I piggyback on that? Can I piggyback on that?
Yeah.
He just got awarded, um, Hall of Fame for.
Just looking for my text.
Fifty years.
Well, that's. Yeah.
Yeah, it was a good truck.
Is he retiring? Not that we know of, correct?
Going for sixty.
Okay. All right, so let's move on. Oh, Patty.
One more thing, uh, this Friday at the Portsmouth Country Club, we've got the RJLA graduation. This will be the last group graduating from that facility. So kind of bittersweet, um, so, yeah. Be a nice time.
Definitely, and they, I know, yeah. It's super, it's, it's so appreciated when board members are able to go, and I know it's during the day and, and, uh, all of that. I also, you know, if you had a chance to go last year, well, if you know people who had a chance to go last year, it's a great event, it's really, you know, it's, uh, Lister, I always have a soft spot for Lister in so many ways, and, and their graduation is just another example of like, well, this is what it can be when you do it right, so.
Okay, so anyone that can go, it's, a bunch of us went last year, it was fun. We had a good time. Okay, we will move on, uh, to the consent agenda. We have two sets of minutes, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, non-public minutes, and May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those two sets of minutes? Thank you, Carrie. Second, Brian, thank you. Any discussion? Liz.
Um, on the, uh, public minutes, um, when it talks about modulars in section. Sorry, I just had it, and then I lost it. Let's see, um. We talked about modulars. Okay, um. In B, yes, sorry, page three, bottom of page three, it says, "My comment." I said, "The units are used for extracurriculars, special education, or services." It wasn't extracurriculars, I was talking about specials, like the, uh, you know. Yeah, so those aren't necessarily extracurriculars, so, um, I just want to clarify that.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Uh, all in favor with that correction?
I was just wondering who the, who's doing the minutes now?
So, um, Nicole.
Or, or it doesn't.
Outside, it's not valid.
Okay, because I, I do just want to say I really appreciate the, like, play-by-play.
Yeah.
Um, and, I mean, sometimes I'm not going to. I, I want to just call out, Carrie Nolte reminded the board, the redistricting committee does exist, has met, and asked her, I was just like, it's actually really kind of a good summary. Well, I appreciate it.
This set I did during the meeting that day, because we didn't have the outside person.
Oh, you did.
So thank you.
But I, 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 I think this is a really great, where we've gone back and forth, there's a really great level of, like, the discussion commentary is there, not too detailed, but you know what people said.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Patty. Okay, so we voted, correct?
No, we didn't.
Oh, all in favor? Hi. Any opposed?
I would like to abstain, because I wasn't present.
Okay. If one of, extension. Okay, let's move on to public comments. Do we have anyone here that would like to participate in the public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to participate in public comment?
Nobody with their hand raised.
Okay. Thank you, Patty. Okay, we will move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, um, you've got, uh, email summaries and field trip summaries, uh, as, uh, typical. I think, as you know, so most, all the email stuff, the four email, um, messages all, you know, basically referred back to Dundero or busing for the, uh, for the West End. All, one way or another, connected back to that. You have, uh, overnight field trip, uh, activity for, um, again, I think it's always good to realize how many opportunities we have for students to, to go abroad. So again, you've got, uh, trip to Japan, um, where folks will be going off to our sister city in, uh, Nishinon. Uh, and then, uh, two trips to, uh, Italy that will be happening next year.
Are they looking for chaperones for any of those trips?
Your, your high school principal and your superintendent are going with them this time around, so.
I, um.
So, and then, uh, Liz.
Um, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It just confused me. In regard, in regard to the school busing.
Yeah.
Isn't, um, if I remember correctly, when my kids were in school, if you were within the one mile from the school, there was no buses available, correct? Is that still?
Can I pull it up real quick? I feel like the, I had reached out, I'm gonna get back to that particular parent, I think it was a mile and a half.
Well, a half.
Uh, but definitely within a mile.
Right.
That's been the, so the school board, though, doesn't have a stated, it's not a policy that lays out the exact distance, but the, I think, state of New Hampshire regs, and I'll find it by the end of the meeting, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
That's, it's within that mile and a half. So this is, this would be s- shorter distance than, than that, the request.
Okay.
Um, I have two questions, um, about the overnight field trips. It says Italian three, six. What is that?
Levels, it's, uh, levels, Italian three, four, five, and six.
Okay, because it says grades, but then, so, okay, so we're talking.
In that case, it's just the actual course level.
So are these just high schoolers?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then for busing, is there a time that we could, you know, we're meeting over the summer now? Is there, um, a conversation to be had, or any sort of, like, pre-planning that could happen before the school year starts regarding busing and looking at routes and whatnot? So that we don't run into an issue next year with, you know, after-school programs or anything else? I mean, you know, obviously, you know, maintaining some status quo, but if there's these little tweaks that need to happen, or concerns that could be addressed, it'd be helpful if we could, you know, plan ahead if possible, and, you know, when, you know, could we be a part of that or something?
So those routes are typically, it's August, I mean, by the time, because we want to get our fullest enrollment, and so then, uh, STA, our, our vendor, um, you know, works out, works out the routes, uh, routes for us within the guidelines we provide, but which typically have been, was it a mile and a half? I think that, right? I'll, I'll find it, I'll find it.
Yeah, and I, so they do get revisited every summer, um, before the rates get posted, the routes get posted, and we, we've been working to try to accelerate that, but part of what Zach just said is trying to get our, uh, the most updated, uh, registration list and know who, who's where. Uh, but we keep, we've worked each year to try to get the, the routes posted a little sooner, because right now, it's often within the last week or so before the start of school that the final rates go up. So we, uh, rates, routes, sorry, go up, so. But, but it, it waits, because we, we try to identify who are, who the folks, who the students are that are coming in, where they live, change, uh, neighborhood stops as they need to. Um, some focus paid to the littlest among us, um, that are getting on the bus in their neighborhood, so.
So, I was gonna say, New Hampshire State law is two miles, so, uh, and so, uh, we, at the moment, um, we are, see, elementary, this is from, um, from our bus company, so Little Harbor and Dundero currently walk up to one point two miles at the furthest point. Uh, New Franklin, um, is point eight at the furthest point for walking. Um, and then the, the middle school route that be, that was, is being requested would be one point five miles from the middle school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and I would just say, other, two other things, just to Liz's point about, about busing, we, we're, we are about to have a conversation, I think. REC is interested in our, whether or not we have the ability to transport students to community campus. Um, we are still, you know, our bus company is still trying to hire bu- uh, bus drivers. Uh, so some of it is around the capacity for the, what the bus company can, uh, can provide. I don't know in the past that that's been, that that conversation about where we are gonna do routes, I don't, I don't, never been in a district where the school board's been directly involved in selecting routes. Because it, because I, you know, I haven't, um, but, uh, but if there's certain guidelines that, uh, the board would like to provide through policy, we're, we're more than happy to, to, um, help design things around that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Liz.
I guess I would just say that, I think that is a good point, that I think the school board maybe should address in policy, because, I mean, I still have concerns with the pickup spot at Patriots Park being on Route One, and when you take a turn, you could easily hit a kid. Um, and, you, and, you know, and some of these concerns that are coming out. Um, so, I mean, if the school board could navigate that through policy, also, you know, we have Lister moving over to, uh, community campus, so I think there will have to be a shift, and so, you know, is there a way to coordinate between the REC department and, and whatnot? So, I mean, if we could, you know, potentially have some sort of policy, just, you know, at least it can lay out, you know, if a parent calls and says, or emails and says, well, what about our kids on the West End? And we say, well, with, you know, one point two, or, or, you know, point eight, whatever the, you know, so we can at least point to a policy, it would be great.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Let's move on to correspondence. Um, Zach.
So, two, uh, letters of resignation, uh, Lisa Trori at the, who's been the nurse at, uh, LHS for the last, uh, fifteen years, and and, uh, Eileen Marusik, who's, uh, been in the, the student assist, student assistant program, uh, counselor at the high school. Both, uh, both people.
We thank them for their service to our school district and wish them well. Um, okay, thank you, Zach. We'll move on to the administrative report. Nathan?
Uh, the financials were in your packet. I will tell you, there's no new news. They're best to right-size and, uh, and project areas that had been in the red that we've been paying attention to, including out of district tuition and services. Uh, the energy account, which actually not in the red, but with the balance, uh, and the student transportation as well. So those numbers are all fairly reflective of where we think they'll land at the end of next month. We have just the one meeting in June, I'll be back to you with the May financials, the May ending, when we get together in June. Uh, and then, uh, later this summer, first of all, when we've had a chance to close the books, we'll be back with the year end. But take any questions if there are folks.
Um, Carrie.
Um, I just wanted to ask about with the loss of the accountant and with the transition to your position, and obviously, that's a huge workload, um, shift, and whether there's, um, anything else we can do to help support that, or you, and.
What I would say is the, the staff, your administrative team throughout the district, um, they're accommodating and understanding, so uh, some of what the accountant was working on was monthly, monthly updates and reporting, um, had, uh, doing the same thing with federal grants, et cetera. Those are things that folks can access largely on their own, but it takes a little bit of tech savvy to get any kind of software and generate that. Uh, and so, a couple, a couple, when we first did it, a couple said, oh, I don't really need that, I take that myself, but there, there were a greater number who said, wow, thank you, that's good information, I can count on. So, uh, they're getting, uh, they're, they're getting a rudimentary version of that, not quite so slick as it was, but then, it, we'll make sure they got the right information, but as we march towards the, uh, year end, they, they know the drill, so we'll, still drawn.
And we anticipate that we'll, there, uh, will be some restructuring of that position, now that it's, now it's open, so we, as, as we're thinking about someone else coming on, we want to make sure we're, if anything, augmenting that position a bit, uh, in order to make sure we have a really strong team moving into, to, uh, the business office. It'd be great to have Nathan down the hallway, um, but, uh, we want to, you know, bring on a couple of folks who are gonna kind of develop as a team.
It's worth saying out loud that I expect to be involved in closing out this just year. I was here for the whole thing, nobody else should have to, um, finalize some U.S. funds, voting that stuff out, that, I, I'll be involved in all of that through the summer of us. It's enough to transition in Portsmouth as a city, it's enough different from most of the districts in the state, and it's unique in its own right in a number of ways, so do everything we can to help with the transition, make sure that we feel well.
Thank you, Nathan. We appreciate that. Um, Liz.
Um, if Nathan's position is gonna be turning into several positions, um, I mean, you said you're bringing on a couple people.
So Carrie, Carrie referenced the accountant.
Okay.
As a role that, uh, someone resigned from recently.
Okay.
So, so that's, you know, someone who's gonna be kind of the number two role.
Okay.
Um, and so, that, that's all I'm talking about, is we'll have a new person come in, and they'll have that other empty slot that we'll be filling as well.
Okay, do you have a timeline for when that's gonna be posted and what?
It's all posted. We've interviewed, um, um, my hope is that by the next board meeting, we've got somebody in place.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have one more item, if I may.
Yeah.
It's not only agenda, but with regard to finances, this is the time of year when we are, we are asked by the federal government to contemplate our food service, run the, run the new formulas and generate next year pricing. And, uh, last year, not everybody was sitting at this table, but we sat on the table, I think we dealt ourselves, our star community of forty cent, uh, forty cent rate, uh, forty cent hike on the prices. Uncle Sam reimburses us for, for free meals at a rate that's in excess of four, uh, four dollars now, uh, per meal. They, they reimburse us for reduced price meals, where, uh, family is asked to pay a, a reduced rate of forty cents, and the balance is, is reimbursed. Uncle Sam also reimburses us now better than forty cents per meal for every meal paid, uh, every meal served that families pay for. So even those who aren't eligible, still, there's a, there's a subsidy from the federal government through the USDA for the program. One of, Uncle Sam's expectations is that we do our best to keep pace with the inflationary pressures that Sam is under. So when our meals are three dollars, and Uncle Sam is reimbursing them at four dollars, the, the formula kicks in and says that there is some requirement. I will tell you that that whole harmless that's built in is that they wouldn't compel us to move more than ten cents in a given year. But they compare us against a calculation every year, which is a two percent rate increase as an attempt to catch up. And they're increasing at the CPI rate that they told from the Consumer Price Index for the year in question, twenty-four, twenty-five, but Consumer Price Index that Uncle Sam is using is rate, is growing by eight point two seven percent. Ours is two percent on top of that, because we are catching up with Uncle Sam's rate, so it's a hefty increase that you will eventually have to catch up with. You can try to catch up with it gradually, but eventually, well, you may never catch up, but you will always be working the minimums. Part of what we decided last year was to try to catch up, so we did more than a ten cent minimum. Uh, we got a new, a new tool from Uncle Sam to do the analysis this year, and we've done it. We're reviewing that, Deb Rizzo, the Food Service Director and I, and comparing options, because it would deal us another, another increase, but it looks like it would be twenty-five cents, but, but we can limit ourselves as, is the, is the mechanism to a ten percent whole harmless, if we like. Uh, there are a couple of other exceptions in the statute that allow us for performance in other ways, like having money left over from a previous year, to apply that and, and not have to raise the rates. I apologize to you in this presentation, I think that what I should have done was have the answers and put it in front of you so that you could deliberate on it. We've only got the one meeting next month, but I expect that in the packet for the June meeting, I'll have an analysis that'll tell you what is there, uh, what the rules say, what, what are, you know, what are our meal counts, et cetera, look like, and, and we'll have a recommendation for the big increase, and we should want to get that done before school ends in June, so we can communicate to families what hot lunch will look like when they come back in the fall. Just wanted you to know that that's, that'll be in the packet, and, and, and you can take the recommendation, or we can make adjustments, so that's something we've looked to do in June.
Liz.
Um, this new forty cents per full-paid meal, that's new, right? Okay.
Well, enough the dollar, the, the, the rate is growing over time, but it's been around, it's been around a number of years.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to recall. Okay, and I guess I just wondered, too, is there any idea that that's in place in case somebody rocks up a bill, they have full, you know, and so would there ever be? You know, I'm just thinking about, you know, those stories you hear in the news, kid racks up the school lunch bill, doesn't get lunch, you know what I'm saying? Or kid racks up school lunch bill, and, you know, the parents are stuck with the bill. Is there any idea that that forty cents could be potentially credited to people that, you know, maybe, you know, are paying full fee, but find themselves in a financial hardship due to job loss or whatever, and they haven't filled out the forms or anything like that? I guess, and just, uh, uh, you know, I hadn't really thought about it before, but I guess I was curious, you know, if that's ever something the school would consider, the school department would consider, you know, when, if there's ever a kid that racks up a bill in such a way.
Well, I guess we're saying, we have lots of kids who rack up lots of bills.
Yeah.
Families, uh, choose not to pay or are unable to pay, it's, in, in many cases, it's a, it's a real challenge, because the last thing that you ever want to do is hold back, um, uh, from serving a child. The whole idea of the Hot Lunch Program is to serve every child, and I think any of us in the mix doing this would be just as happy to serve everybody. Um, and that's been discussed over the last couple of years in Portsmouth. It's not without cost, and it's significant, although some have determined that it might be a very reasonable cost to bear, to make sure that every child that we have in our schools has a breakfast and a lunch. Unfortunately, I think there's always a, there's always a creative way. The forty cents or whatever, the forty-two cents, whatever that is, that comes as a subsidy against every paid meal, I don't think the USDA would smile on us directing that specifically to any one child. The truth is, you can and do, um, support some students in other ways, so you could, one hand versus the other, you could say, I'm getting this extra money against paid meals, I'm using it uh, to offset costs, so that I can spend some other money over here, that's not the USDA's money to support the child. I, I don't think that you could take that federal subsidy and direct it specifically to a student. It's the whole program, the whole National School Lunch Program is, uh, very much, um, orchestrated and regulated mechanism from the, you know, GS Department of Agriculture, so, um, so it's pretty prescribed, a prescriptive, I should say, what we can and can't do that way. But there's always, like, the program will probably, it'll probably lose money this year. It didn't. Coming out of COVID, we had a lot of federal, Uncle Sam was reimbursing us at four dollars and twenty-three-five cents, whatever, for every meal we served, because everybody was free. Now Uncle Sam is only paying for those who are, uh, applied and eligible. We are, um, we are only getting three dollars and an average three dollars and fifty-four cents per meal, because we have lower rates at the elementary, and then middle and high, high school is higher, but our average is three dollars and fifty-four cents, and Uncle Sam's giving us seventy-five cents, or something like that more. But we're losing money, so it looks like the program will finish at least fifty thousand in the hole this year. Now, it has some dollars left over from the surpluses of the past couple of years, so it's not like it's crumbling, but we were spending as much as we dream, we, we had to cover two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of loss in the program the year before COVID, so, um, it's at the, the prices that we pay to people, and the prices that we pay for our material, for the good food that we try to provide, are anywhere in the same ballpark with the rates that we're charging even for the fully-paid meals. Um, and so it's a challenge, it's a challenge to find the dollars and determine how you can support your community and benefit your kids, even while trying to run that business, and in order to get people in, we've raised the starting rate fifteen bucks an hour to get people working in the kitchens. Uh, but that, that all adds to the price of the meals that we're serving, so it's a, uh, I don't want to say it's a, it's a losing battle, but it's a different, it's a definite challenge, um, for food service. The programs across the state that are winning are not necessarily doing it better. They have, many of them have one, you know, specific plus, which is, for them, they have closed campuses, think of like an extra high school up in the middle of nowhere. Nobody's got time to beefy and get to McDonald's, so the kids all eat cafeteria. Here, we have a relatively open campus for a number of our, uh, seniors and, and juniors, I think, eventually in the year, no, maybe, eventually juniors.
Yeah.
So, so you can get off campus, and then you're not eating the cafeteria, and so we don't generate the same volume.
What's in your highest price, uh?
And your highest.
Obviously, using à la carte high school items.
High school items.
For those of you who were, uh, chocolate chip cookie and a slice of pizza, chocolate milk kid.
Yeah.
You helped power the food program, uh, because, you know, um, and, uh, but, but here, because we have the open campus, all, a lot of that revenue flows off of campus.
Are we cutting anybody off? Like, cutting any kids off at any grade, ever?
Unless, unless your grades aren't in good standard.
No, not from the off-campus. I'm talking about from food.
Oh.
Yeah. All right, I just wanted to be sure. Okay.
And, and so, this is, I apologize for taking you down the right path of this topic, but as we move forward, it's a, you will, you will undoubtedly reach a point where it might make more sense to shift budgetary focus and run your own program. You know, run your own program. You certainly aren't going to lose two million dollars a year. I forget the number that we came up with, something like two million dollars to run. You're not gonna lose two million dollars that the general fund has to pick up in any given year, but it's, it's reasonable, as I contemplate how the costs continue to rise, from Uncle Sam as much as for us, as the costs continue to rise for the program that we're trying to provide, and the quality expectation continues to stay high and grow. It will continue to lose money, and it reasonably should lose more and more money, just because of the way the model is structured. Um, I think we've left behind the opportunity for major efficiencies. That's, you know, we don't, we have very few people, we can't staff it fully, so we have very few people working really hard from, for not a ton of, ton pay um, in, um, in, in challenging situations, and we're performing well. Um, we're already inviting cooperatives and doing everything we can to keep the price down for materials that we buy to cook with. Uh, it's just, you know, there's an expectation in schools that you charge a very modest price and make sure every child is fed, and eventually, we might actually come to a point where it makes more sense to, to find a few extra dollars and fund it, but that's, obviously, that's a a future conversation, but I'll be back with the best information in the packet I can the next time, too, to, to, to run around to our decision.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Okay, can we move on to old business, and Pip will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Um, so we have, uh, two policies that we saw last time, um, that we just are here, that are back for a second reading. Um, the first is prohibition re, prohibitions regarding use and possession of tobacco and e-products. Um, so I'll just ask if anyone has questions about that at this point. Yeah, Byron?
So, in our, in that meeting, um, in the policy meeting, we talked about this particular policy. At the very end, I brought up, um, the nicotine packets, ZYN, uh, which is a product, uh, popular product, and in the context of that meeting, I recall sort of the assumption being that those were covered in the policy, or they were covered in the RSAs. Um, but I looked at the RSAs and the policy, and I couldn't find anything specifically that called out nicotine powder, which is what is in, is in. Um, and, uh, Nathan, actually, the last meeting brought it up, he was like, did you guys talk about ZYN? It's littering. Um, and uh Nathan, actually, the last meeting brought it up, he was like, did you guys talk about Zin, and it's littering the halls of the high school. Um, and which is not surprising because it's sort of innocuous looking and easily hidden, and so I could definitely see it being proliferating in that, in that context. Um, and then looking in the, uh, and then looking in the policy itself. Everything refers to um nicotine. Um, liquid nicotine and like calls out specific materials, but it doesn't call out nicotine powder. Um, which is specifically, again, what Zen is, so. I think it would be remiss to not to pass this policy without calling out probably what is, I mean, anecdotally anyway, probably the most used nicotine product at this point. Um, which is relatively new product, and so I, I, in the, in the kinds of the policy meeting, I was good with moving forward with it, but giving it second thought, I do think it's probably. Prudent to go back and call that out specifically because it is so popular right now.
Yeah.
You know what, oh, can we have a motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we should have, yeah.
Can I comment before we motion it or create a motion?
No, because we need to have.
Let's have.
Need to comment during the discussion.
Have the discussion.
So is there a motion to?
To approve A B C slash G B E D slash J I C G.
Second.
Okay, thanks, okay, so let me just respond to Byron quickly because I, I remember that discussion in the policy committee meeting and we did decide, oh, it's covered. Under the RSA and we can't possibly list everything, but I think you're right, as a general category of. Of items or types of nicotine, it's not listed, so I would concur that we should probably add nicotine powder.
Liz. Um, so I, I guess my concern is, is in this policy, similar to like other policies in the past where we had. We listed out all these different things, right, we're, we're going into E liquid, liquid nicotine, E cigarette, da 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 da. I think to summarize this and within the definitions, I think you just need to have a definition that's, that says. You know, liquid nicotine, E nic, anything with nicotine, you know, anything with tobacco. Um, and get away from having to go through every single section of this policy and have tobacco product, E cigarette and liquid nicotine. Um, employees, the product device, E cigarette, E liquid, liquid nicotine, so you're having to repeat these things over and over and over again. If you just had it in the definitions, like tobacco products and nicotine products to include and list everything. Then you'd only have to have one definition and use that throughout, so you don't have to constantly repeat, 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 repeat. Throughout the policy, so I think it's, if you can make that edit, then, you know, within the definition section, you could just throw in every type of. Tobacco product and nicotine product.
So can I ask you if, if what you mean is, um. I think I understand consolidating in the, in the other sections. But under definitions, are you also recommending that we just list those sort of categories or? Or are you actually saying we should, we should list as many things as we can fit?
I just don't understand why we have to go into E liquid, E cigarette, device, all these different things, I think you could say. To pa, you know, definitions, tobacco, you know, tobacco products slash nicotine products to include and then list out. All the different options for, you know, products that contain nicotine and tobacco, I mean, I know that there's an RSA, so you, there's probably. Certain things listed within the RSA that you want to put out, but I just, I don't know why we're defining E cigarette and E liquid and liquid nicotine, but we're not gonna. We're, you know, so then we're gonna add another. You know, are we gonna define chewing tobacco, are we gonna define, you know, uh vape pens, are we gonna find? Um, I don't know, you know, it's, there's just so many different options and I just kind of wonder if you could just. Simplify it a little bit, I mean, you guys have already done a lot of work, there's a policy from the RSA, so I mean, you don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel here. Um.
I think any of these items with lists can get messy that way, but.
Yeah, I just think maybe having tobacco products and nicotine products.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I was thinking along the same lines because, I mean. Ten years ago, did we think that we were going to have, you know, people vaping in high schools, probably not, and is there going to be some future nicotine product? That we're not going to cover if we call it a general nicotine, you know, all nicotine products. Is that, i- is there a problem with doing that?
Okay, I was gonna say, I think the. And I think this is probably good for, I mean, it's a good discussion here, but also definitely good discussion in the policy, in the policy practice. I think the only thing I would caveat against any nicotine product. Is potentially like nicotine gum or a patch, which is like particularly prescribed, and I don't know, and I don't know. If, you know, a minor is, you know, that could be prescribed for a minor, no, yeah, okay, that's my only concern, it's like, maybe there's, maybe there's some.
But we have people who are not minors in school too.
Okay, fair, yeah.
And then Lisa, oh, oh.
It might change the conversation. Patty was great and just would mentioning to me that, so NHSBA. Um, on the twenty third or twenty second, put out their updated list of policies that need revisions. And this is one of the. So, so ADC, uh, it coded as ADC, they have a new model that came out just in the last couple of days. So, so I think it makes, so in light of that, I think you could, you could continue to have some conversation to, to inform. Some of the policy committee conversation, and then we should take a look at that new model anyways.
Like, okay.
I agree with taking the things out, I think it's a great thought where it is getting combined with the staff policy. To put um. Like nicotine replacement or like the smoking cessation medication, um, because the powder is nicotine. And. Those can be, so typically the patches and gums are over the counter purchased, they're not prescription, there are, there's. Uh, smoking cessation needs that are prescription, so I would just stay away from that prescription terminology because they're actually. But in summary, I think this goes back to policy based on the discussion, so it seems like this. Uh, conversation can continue there with the NHSBA.
Yeah.
Okay, I think Lisa had something to say.
And I'm gonna ditch most of it since it's gonna go back to policy, but I just want to say as a counterpoint to taking all of the definitions out. That a high school handbook that's distributed to students does not provide them with that detail, and I think wherever possible, we should document with total clarity what students should expect. You know, because like many of our other policies where there could be disciplines, if it's not in policy, it's not always well articulated in the handbook. So that would be my own counterpoint, if we take it out of here, I think we really need to put it somewhere else that's available to students. Sorry. What I mean is the high school handbook for when it talks about policies gives like sort of bullet points and highlights. And so I think when we take out these definitions, we're not really giving kids an opportunity to know with great specificity, I mean, sure, we should say, don't smoke. And just make that a rule, but for some people, it can be unclear what the rules are, especially when the products are changing. And I think when you're gonna have discipline involved, you should be really transparent and as clear as possible with students.
Okay, good point, thank you, Lisa, and Liz, you can sum it up for us.
Um, well, I guess I'm wondering if we should approve this policy, if it, if it needs to be updated and we should approve it with an amendment right now to add in. Uh, covering Zen, if it is a real issue immediately at the high school that we need to direct a policy to. While um, policy committee revamps this to the NH uh SBA, so I guess I'm wondering if we should. You know, vote, you know, motion to approve this right now, know that it's gonna go back to the policy committee and add an amendment. Um, to add in uh powdered nicotine, specifically Zen, so that. Um, the admin have something to point to.
Well, the motion to approve is there, right, we need. Oh. Okay, what do you have, why don't we withdraw the motion and send it back to the policy committee?
I wouldn't even mention like the brands in, there's.
Uh, my only concern about it is that we don't have a definition for it, so if we want to say that we can add. We will add that, we will amend the motion to add nicotine powder with the definition for nicotine powder.
Like a smokeless nicotine pouch.
I think what, I think what Liz was suggesting is that we just, we just approve as it's written, right, without any amendment?
No, with adding powder.
Yeah, if we need the amendment and then know that it's gonna go back to policy anyways, or should we just let it go back to policy? And hope that policy comes back and we can approve something before the new handbook comes out, and so it can be very clear about. Everything, I mean, school's almost done, right, so.
Difference between nicotine and tobacco that has to be worked out in here, because this is all tobacco specific, so I am going to withdraw my motion uh to approve.
I'll, I'll withdraw in a second. I also just want to make sure though that I'm looking very quickly at the notes that we have from NHSBA to describe the change. Um, and the notes are not very detailed yet, uh, but it looks, but I don't see specifically where this particular thing. Yeah, the powdered to uh nicotine products is uh definitely part of that update. So it might not, so I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to be like, that's, it's, it's all solved for us, we just gotta go see the new thing. It may be, it may not be, I can't tell from the very short notes they give us.
I think we can, I think we can hash it out policy, I think that's the.
I think we just.
Yeah, and it sounds like we're all in agreement that it should.
We have the theme that we want, I think, right.
Okay, so the motion is withdrawn and we will. Back table this till next time.
Okay.
Thank you, Pip.
That's gonna be an easy one. Okay, maybe therapy dogs will be easier. Please fix everything.
Motion to.
Do we have a second, Lee?
Yes.
Was the first.
Thank you.
Second, and we already have. Oh, okay, Lisa is the second.
Okay, um, as discussed last time, we don't have a, a uh policy, I mean, sorry, a. Therapy dog program per se, so this was updated to um, to be consistent with that and. And approved by our insurance company. Um, and also to make sure that we're not. Paying, being required to pay for dog needs like food and such. Does anyone have questions about it as it is now? You can ask your questions, okay.
This dog assisted instruction.
That is the opposite of a therapy program.
I'm truly curious.
Well, it's. My understanding is it's when using a dog. As part, as a tool for education or. Um.
But the dog is not, doesn't have a piece of chalk. In some form, what, what we're trying to capture that, yeah, in some forms, some element of the way in which we're delivering education is augmented by the dog. And I think we're trying to find, we're trying to wordsmith it.
Dogmented.
Trying to, trying to wordsmith it, just write.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, any, any other comments about that question?
All right. Um, all those in favor? And you posed. All right, looks like that one passes.
Okay, thank.
That's it for now, I guess.
I think you come up later on on the agenda. Okay, new, under new business, um, I have drafted a. Possible response. To the issue of redistricting. Um, that I think, um, well, it's up to the board, first we have to decide, do we think a statement is necessary to release to the. Media, social media. About the situation regarding redistricting in our community. There's been some controversy with the city council. Um. And we at our last meeting voted unanimously to. Continue to um advocate for the modular at Don Dero. So that's actually the second time we voted on it, we voted it for our budget.
Yep.
And now we voted it again, so. The board is um strongly in favor of having a modular at Don Dero for the next school year, maybe just one year, possibly two. Um, councils, some counselors, I, you don't think it's the majority of counselors, but a couple of counselors. Including the mayor and the assistant mayor are very opposed to this and have been very vocal about that. I don't know if you all saw the um. Uh, newspaper article which was on social media also. Um, so I guess my first question is, do people feel we should make a statement? And if so, this is just a draft.
Lisa. So I just have a question, this isn't on here, is an action item, so you're looking for a vote to do what? I just want to make sure I understand.
I'd, I'd like to have a vote. To decide whether we want to make a statement and if we do, to actually construct a statement.
I guess.
And there's a draft, it, this is a draft statement, a rough, a rough draft that I put together.
Okay, I agree with all the things you said, I'm just curious about it as a precedent, because we've had other times in the past when we have opted not. To have communications go out to people from the board. So I'm just curious.
Well, this would be signed by every board member. We would put all of our.
I understand, I'm just trying to sort of parse, if we're doing this for redistricting, like what in your mind is the? Other things that we would do this for?
Oh, I don't know, uh, anything could come up that maybe we feel, if, if you felt we should respond to some issue that's in our community, you was a board member. Would have a right to say, board, would you like to consider a statement regarding X?
I mean, I think what you've said makes sense, I think.
Lisa, uh, Carrie, uh, Liz.
So I know there was an article in the newspaper, but has there been any opportunity for? You as the chair or Zach to talk directly to these two?
Yes, we had that.
Had that conversation.
That, um, there was a meeting last Thursday night, which I informed all of you about. Um, encouraging anybody to go to talk to the city council, I, I, I was there, Zach was there, I spoke. And I did not.
Right to that, we, we also.
Okay.
So Nancy and I sat down with uh the, with the mayor and his assistant mayor.
You did, okay.
Was there.
And Brian was on the phone, yeah.
Yeah, and so you still, despite that conversation, you've still determined that this is the best course of action.
Yes, I, I do, but I.
And, and how do they, and then when, where are they at that, on that at this point?
Not totally cleared directly, um, but I would say, so it was very helpful for me. That we took the vote the other day around, are we still committed to this as a concept, you know, and I know there was some concern. You know, I, I appreciate listening to me like, why would we, we already sent our proposals, so why would we vote again, but, but I appreciated that you did, because it reinforced. Where you were at, it gave me very clear signaling about what level of um. Push I should make in regards to the, that whole conversation, so we went to. On Thursday night, when we had a public hearing for the entire city budget. Um, the, uh, we had a work session, uh, and so, and the. Um, the, the, I would say by no means was the city council unified in their opposition to this as a concept, but I would say, you know. The mayor had a lot of questions for me, uh, uh, and, and it was good to know. It was very helpful to know the board was still committed to this as a concept and that I should continue to, to push, this is our position and this is what we want to do. Uh, because, you know, the conversation, they, of course, the city council doesn't have the ability, they don't control. Operational decisions, that type of thing, but they control our bottom line, so you know, if, if uh, they, you know, they could uh decide, well, we don't like. Ninety thousand dollars for your justification for your particular budget, and so therefore we're gonna pass something that uh. That uh has ninety thousand dollars less and then you can figure it out, uh, even though they know, then we have the ability to do what we're gonna do with the, with the money. Uh, so, um, so anyways, it was, it was super helpful to. Um, to have you publicly on record reinforcing that it's, that it's a concept, uh, and again, I don't think it is. I don't, I don't, I'm not even clear that there's a majority of the city council that's opposed to this as a concept right now, but at least the, I think. It's clear that the mayor is opposed to it, so.
Well, I guess my feeling was uh outside of whether they approve our budget or not. I just, it seems like this is a, this should be something that we can amicably work out. Back and forth with the city council rather than through the public, so I feel more comfortable not making a public statement about where we are. Because it, yeah, I, I mean, I think we know where we are, we've already voted twice, as you pointed out, where we are. Um, and I don't know that it's a conversation that we have to. Have with the community rather than just with the council.
Thank you, Pip, appreciate the comment.
Carrie and then Liz and then Byron. Um, so, um, I think I agree with Pep around not necessarily putting out a statement now, I think that. Part of our conversation. Our initial organizational meeting with Zach, Byron, myself. I don't, I don't even remember exactly who's there, but sorry, we are convening a redistricting group that includes the leadership from. Um, the elementary schools and from the middle school, um, and then that will. That first meeting is just tentatively planned in a week and a half, and then as we go, there'll be. More open sharing sessions, things like that, lots of solicited feedback, I think. Um. um, I, I guess putting out a statement, um, with kind of the same thing that has already been stated um, is challenging. I think though, if the board does want to put out a statement, um, or use this statement, the one thing that I would ask it to address more is the, um, is when is all of the times the board has talked about redistricting and decided not to redistrict, um, because some of the commentary was that there, there's a failure of the board since twenty nineteen to have done this, but the board has heard, discussed, reviewed, all of that in the meantime. Um, and I think the other piece just from, um, being on that committee is that um, it's not clear that Byron and I were, are co-chairing that. We are we are offering to co-chair that, but until we convene that group, we don't, we just want to modify that. Um, but we have great hopes for, um, geeky things like GIS mapping and programming based on lots of different weightings and things like that, um. Because to be frank, our first meeting was with Planet, it was with Planning?
Housing.
Housing, and we really had hoped that that would give us more insight and it just didn't. We didn't, it, it wasn't what we needed, so we're reaching out for all the things we need now. And if they don't exist, we're apparently doing them ourselves, so.
I think you're gonna be doing it yourself. That's just what I, what I found out. Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, um, Liz and then Lee.
Um, so I do think that there needs to be some sort of statement or communication to the community. Um, once we install these and why our reasoning is for installing them, because I think there's gonna be, you know, what, what are we doing? You know, there's gonna be more questions. I think that as this, you know, before the school year starts or when it starts about this, um, you know, I do think that we need to put some pressure back on the city about how they're developing the city. Um, obviously Route One is a great area to develop, but, um, I, I have to assume that maybe some other areas aren't being as developed because they're maintaining a certain presence, but that's, you know, sort of it, it's creating an imbalance, so to speak, about what areas are being, um, you know, heavily developed versus other areas. Um, I do have concerns with conveying a statement about a bubble class because we've talked about, we don't really know what this kindergarten class is going to look like. Um, and I've expressed concerns and I was part of the redistricting committee before. Um, and it said redistricting committee reassigned the new Parson Woods to Little Harbor and the Kate Street neighborhood to um, Little Harbor. And I expressed concern back in the redistricting committee about doing that. Um, I was, I was the no vote. So we weren't in, it wasn't a unanimous redistricting committee with Ann, me, um, Margot and Hope. Um, I was, I was expressing concern back then um, about doing this because I don't want all the new bigger, nicer neighborhoods to be going to Little Harbor. I think there needs to really be a thoughtful, meaningful conversation. So I think if we did release a statement, I think that we need to release a statement that says we support these units temporarily, don't put a timeline on it and then say, but the community needs to have a greater conversation with planning in the city and whatnot about how we not only develop the city for our school systems, but how we, you know, how we're able to um, structure our elementary schools to have, um, um, you know, uh, greater swath of um, uh, demographics within the school, so to speak. I also had questions about, are we doing one units or two units and, um, and, um, also too, when we have committee meetings, um, I don't believe that we have public comment at committee meetings, so.
We can decide to have public comment at our meetings if we want to. The last time we had a redistricting committee many years ago, there was public comment at every meeting.
Yeah.
Every, it was well attended.
Yeah, so I guess I just worry about conveying that every committee meeting is gonna have public comment when we don't do that and, like, we, and policy, we don't have public comment at policy meetings.
Have public comment in policy.
Yeah, but I, I would hate to commit everybody to having public comment at every committee meeting if we're trying to get, you know, um, work done, you know, have certain sessions where there's public comment, public feedback and whatnot, but but don't commit the committee to have to have public comment in every session. So I would, if I were to do a statement, I would suggest keeping it more vague, that we support the units, at least as a temporary measure, as you know, as there's greater conversations around redistricting, you know, including the city and planning and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lee and then Rick.
So I think we actually should make a, a comment.
We should.
Public statement, yep. And, and that's because I think that, that the city council needs to hear, or needs to hear from parents because like you've said many times, and I've heard in other states as well, when there has been redistricting, people come out of the woodwork when that happens and they are not usually pleased and they're not usually pleasant conversations. So I think for us to provide a statement on what, where we stand currently, and I think also redistricting has to be done thoughtfully. You've stated in the last meeting as well. Right? It's not something you get done over a summer time. So I think we need to be able to make that statement, that public then have the opportunity to reach out to city council. It just is one more avenue. I think we do need to restructure this so that we actually take into account some of the other comments here, but I think we do need to be extended.
Thank you, Lee. Let's do Rick and then Byron.
Byron's first.
Thank you, Rick. Yeah, I thought of, of a ton about this, uh, in the last week and a half, um, um, and so I have, I want to say a few things. I I agree with Lee that I think we should make a statement here. I don't, I think some of this I don't agree with. I agree with Liz that we shouldn't put a timeline on um, like one or two years. Um, I don't think that's he- uh, helpful in the overall statement. But I just want to talk about, uh, I wanna, so the, I'm sure, like Lee said, there's gonna be a lot of people come out of the woodwork and have a lot of emotion about redistricting. There's gonna be a lot of, um, public interest there. Um, and a lot of neighborhoods are gonna be affected because it's gonna be holistic. Um, for me personally, in the neighborhood that I live in, this is a group of people who um, are particularly keyed on this right now because they've been in a position where they're traveling the furthest in town to get to their school. And, um, they're seeing, and so they are particularly interested in this and, um, so I've had a lot of conversations with them. And they're also folks in that neighborhood and folks in Don Dero generally, um, who have their kids in their bubble class. So they have the kids in the first grade class and they have a kid uh, or in the kindergarten class now and the fourth grade class now. And so they are feeling the acute um, situation of being in a larger class or potentially having their kid in, uh, a modular classroom, and maybe they don't think that's a good idea. Um, and so I just want to acknowledge that, um, that they're feeling that way. And that, um, their, the urgency is coming from people who are to advocate from their, for their kids who are in that position right now. And so I don't want to, um, I definitely want to be thoughtful on this. And I definitely agree that, um, and I thought a lot about this and I've had a lot of conversations with parents in my neighborhood who would like for their kid next year to not be in a larger classroom and to just go to the closer school. And it makes sense to them. And I think, and I think it should make sense to them because it, it's, it's pretty clear. Um, but, uh, and so I, I just want to acknowledge that because I've had those conversations. Um, but I do, I, I agree, we, we need, we need to be thoughtful. Um, and I do think we need to, I think it's important to make the statement here uh, about supporting the modular, um, for, for the short term, so that we can be thoughtful and get this right. Um, but I don't like the two years on this because I think that's pushing that too far. Um, and I think the, I don't, I think we're doing a disservice to the people who are like, look, my kid's in this class right now, right? Um, so I just, uh, that's how I'm feeling about this, uh, this right now.
Okay, Rick.
So I don't know if I'm overstepping my role as the teacher rep, but my kid is in that class right now. So looking at this and reading this, I've talked to many of the parents of my kids' friends. Um, they were very unclear on what it was all about. And when I brought up class sizes, bringing a teacher over, that wasn't really portrayed anywhere. They were just thinking like module unit, whatever. So making it more clear that they're gonna add a fifth grade class, so the class sizes will drop considerably might be a good note to have in this. Because once I explain that to most people, they're like, all right, yeah, modular units kind of suck, but, you know, I'd rather my kid be in a seventeen kid class than a twenty-six. And then not going against with, like, I wouldn't want to send my kid to a different school at this point, like.
And it's a mixed bag.
It might be a different neighborhood too, like, you know, there's what it is, but, I mean, it's been an issue and, I mean, personally, you know, a module, I'd rather seventeen kids in a module all day long. Sorry for.
No, 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 that you're speaking right, right in large, no worries. Um, Liz, uh, let's do Tish first and then Liz.
Um, so I do feel that communication. I like that word better than statement. I think communication is softer. Um, with a community would be fantastic because I think there is a lot of confusion um, in the community about it. You see on social media and stuff. They, I think what they're thinking is, we just picked up this trailer that we're putting at the end of the school and throwing kids in. Um, that's why I asked for like pictures and stuff because I, I did Google some and they're actually really fantastic, what they have out there. Um, I think communication that we are strongly looking at redistricting. I think that's important that the community needs to know that we didn't just take on the modules as, um, the modular units just as the easy way out. I think it needs to be communicated that we need to take time to redistrict properly so that we're not doing it every three or four years, that we're, we're looking at the long haul. Um, so I do agree in sending out a statement or communication of some sort. I do agree with Liz that maybe not focusing so much on the mod, uh, the modulars, but stating that with a, that there's a teacher coming over to teach in that classroom is important. Um, that's a really good point that you made. Um, but focusing a lot on that we will be working with the community on redistricting. And then because that also gives the community a, a sense of responsibility that, first of all, they have a voice in that. And, um, it's their responsibility too to help work with us on that.
Thank you, Tish. Okay, uh, let, Carrie hasn't said anything yet. Let's see people that haven't said something yet.
I was just gonna be quick if you want to be, all right, I, um, I guess it, I think it would be good and it would help with the confusion and some of the emails we've gotten in if we could commit the modular to a class like music. And I don't mean to make a decision for you, but I'll give an example. When I was in Don Dero, the modular unit was music and I think there were special ed services. Um, music kind of seems like a good no-brainer for a modular unit. They can go bang and do whatever they want without disrupting any classroom around them. You know what I'm saying? So I think, I think some of the confusion is around, is my kid gonna be in a trailer for class this year? And so I think if we were to release a statement, if we could commit that the modular unit would be a class like music or art or something of the sort, um, and that one of those spaces would open up as a classroom and the classrooms would all remain in the school. I think, um, Mr. Huguen makes a good point about having, um, uh, clarity that there's gonna be the, the classroom size. You know, there's gonna be four classrooms. I don't think we necessarily need to say teachers moving over, but there's gonna be four classrooms for fifth grade still. We're gonna keep the numbers down, uh, but I still think this still brings up questions about kindergarten, right? So, um, you know, but I think if we could commit that the classroom's not gonna be in the unit, that it would be a special or something in the unit. Um, I think that would help. I mean, I don't, I don't have a kid in the, in the group, so maybe you guys could speak to it, but I think some of the emails we've been getting, getting in, it's kind of like the question of like, you know, and I've heard people on the soccer team and stuff that with my son, you know, it's like, is my kid gonna be in a trailer, so to speak?
Hey, thank you, Liz.
Yeah, sorry.
I think we should, on terminology about modular classrooms, and I understand the terminology, but like, it, I, I think having had just an initial meeting on this, I think I, I, I understand where you're coming from about wanting it to be designated and that would help. I really it, the way that enrollment has gone though, any commitment that's made may have to change, and I think that's worse. Um, so I would be, I, I don't think that we should say what that is. I think that is a dis- decision for the community at Don Dero to make and not for me to even comment on, um. And then they would message that out as that, um, as that came, but I had originally said I didn't think a statement would go, I, I didn't want a statement to go out. I think I've been convinced that a statement should go out. I guess, I, I, I guess what I'm worried about is one that I'm in the process of kind of convening this group, and so I want to make sure I can get the most recent information into this. So if people want to move forward with this is what it's gonna be, that, and, and then if you update it Nancy and want to just send it to Byron and I, um, I can at least circulate it through that group that has yet to be convened. I just don't, I, I I'm a little worried that we haven't convened a group that we're making a statement kind of on behalf of, and so if you don't, if the board can give us that leeway just to vet it through that group, that would, I would be in support of it.
Okay, uh, oh, okay. Lisa.
So I also think that if we are gonna put out a statement, it would be good to just have a distribution plan that's not expecting actual media coverage from the press release because the news is sort of already out. So I don't know how much they'll necessarily do another story. So if we have a plan to distribute it either on Parent Square or in some other way so that it reaches families.
I think that we need to get it out to as many outlets as possible. We can send it to the editor at the newspaper, but who knows if they're gonna run it. We can, we can try. Okay, this, this is my suggestion. Um, well, first of all, I have, I have a couple of updates. I have talked to Susan Green from Green and Company. They're the ones that are developing most of those developments along Route One, including Parson Woods. And I asked her who's moving into these houses, and interestingly enough, um, it seems to be retirees, empty nesters. As far as, you know, when they, when somebody buys a house, they don't say to them, do you have kids? How many kids? Are they gonna go to school here? You know, they don't really ask those questions. But there aren't a lot of families. Um, and I know in Parsons Woods, which is fifty-six homes, and they have three to four bedrooms each. Right now, there are three families that have bought into that neighborhood out of fifty-six homes. Now, I don't think all fifty-six are sold, but the sign does say eighty percent sold. So there's quite a few sold. I was looking at the condos on Juniper Lane, you know, going down Route One, sort of across from where Allen Wayside Furniture is. And those, again, those are three to four bedroom condos, and those as far as she knew, didn't have families so far. They're retirees, young couples that don't have children. Uh, we have one from Juniper Lane.
Yeah.
We have one at Don Dero from.
And the stats I used with the, the, we did a quick check the other night according to the work session. And I talked about how we did that work where we moved over everything on Kate Street. So West End Yards, um, West End Place, West End Landing, um, and Parsons Woods. And when we move stuff over, I think as of I think in the last couple of days, all that, if you look at just elementaries, like how many elementary school kids do affect? Two. Uh, all those properties. Um, so, so that's part of this like thoughtful conversation, and that was, that echoes what was going on in planning, was this conversation about planning where they said one, two uni- one to two bedroom units. You probably not can see, you know, and that's, that's the price point people can hit, uh, and you probably not can see people. But we'll be, as we start to, and Byron talked with this modeling, I think, um, you know, we can look at about six different developments that have popped up over the last five years and get an analysis of like roughly this type of units are producing this many students from the school district and try to, try to extrapolate from that. And then we know there's some slightly different types of housing going in, the, the, the stuff that was just approved at the Tor building. Uh, will include some three-bedroom units, um, fourteen three-bedroom units, ten of which are earmarked for below, below market for, uh, price point. Um, so we might get something out of that, but that's already, we didn't do anything. That's already districted. Thanks. I, I think there's, there's work to be done, and I think what people, what your common sense tells you when you see all the building happening um, does not necessarily reflect the reality on the ground. We'd have more work to do to determine whether or not that's what's gonna happen.
So you on the redistricting committee will have to really.
Let me GIS map it before we talk more.
I'll feel better about mine. Wait, I just have one other comment and then we'll do Pip and Liz. Um, I also, I told you all I was gonna, this is a little off track. I was gonna contact the city council so that we could all have meetings with them. So I wrote an email to every city councillor. I wrote the same email to every city councillor asking if they would be willing to meet with school board members less than four, they would have less than four, and we would have less than four, which is in line with the right to know. I immediately got a phone call from our city attorney telling me. I immediately got a phone call from our city attorney telling me that I, I was in violation of the right to know law. And I said, even though I specifically said it would be less four, less than five. And maybe one or two school board members. And she said, no, you can't do it. So I was surprised because I've done it in the past. When we were trying to build our high school a few years ago, we wind and dine the city council. We took them out, we took them to breakfast, lunch and dinner and we got our high school. Violation of the right to know law, so um, unfortunately. Unfortunately, we can't, um, can't reach out like that. If you happen to bump into one, like Carrie often bumps into a neigh- uh, mayor at New Franklin School, so if anybody. Susan suggested that we go on last Thursday, which I did attend, and now there's another one on June third.
And I think it might be a good idea for the council to hear from a couple of board members during the comment section. If you are, you know, cuz this, cuz, cuz that could be the last, that might be. I mean, it's possible, right? Nathan, they could close out on, on June third, could be the end of the conversation.
Sorry, go ahead, Nathan.
Bunch of could be completed.
Could be done on June third.
And then, uh, Byron, for one, can you just briefly describe what the modular looks like? Because I know when Liz is talking about when my kids were there, the modules were not great, but now.
I thought they were, I was in them. Sorry, I mean, I.
Now, Council Blaylock said that the other night. He said, I was at Don Darrow. He said it was a blast going into the. He cracked everybody up. But anyway, can you just assure us that they're, they're nice units, they air conditioned, they have heat?
They are climate controlled. For alarms, for uh, intercom, for data, you know, connect connectivity, um, the uh.
Is there one or two?
It's a single unit, but it has two, two classes. So it's like, yeah.
Is there a bathroom in the?
Students will have to come in, they have to come in, yeah.
And there's shelter coming from the modular unit into school.
There's, there's, it's roofed and then we're working through how, what the sides are gonna look like. And what we can do in relation to um, the ADA laws because we're coming into a. To a platform where people have to exit. So that's the piece that we're still kinda.
I was wondering about that cuz that's, that entrance is where a lot of the teachers. Cuz they park there, they go in and out there at Don Darrow, so that exit, exit is still available for.
On the plan, I think we have, we as a, as part of fire code, just as an egress, we have to continue to have that as an egress.
Can we pull up, sorry, can we pull up plans from the like past time that we had a unit and just emulate them like?
Everything I just described is all stuffed up there because it's been, we've had them there before. I think multiple times in forty years that there's been. A unit out there, so the connectivity is not. It's not, not challenged necessarily because it, it exists there in the buildings from when there was a modular.
Okay, okay, who seems rough? Pip and Liz.
Um, I, I will just add that I think that might be worth saying in our communication that we've had them there before. So it's not like this whole, you know, it's like, there is a precedent for it. Um, and I also wanted to say that I have come around now to agreeing that should, that there should be some communication. But I like the term communication rather than the statement. Um, just cuz it seems a little more agreeable. Yeah, exactly. And then I just wanted to say, when, um, if, I like the idea of it being more general, by the way, and less, and a little. Um, less committed to specifics. I think that's a safer way to go, but um. When you said, um, the redistricting committee reassigned the new Parson Wood, Parsons Wood. Did we reassign it or was it just assigned? Because was it, was it already assigned? I think. If I, it's, it's a little, um.
Yeah, and I don't even know.
Like I'm, I worry that that will scare people, like, oh, they've already done things, you know, like, so if you just say assigned. Which I think is the reality, but I don't want it to be wrong. Um, then, uh.
It technically would have gone to Don Darrow, so we did reassign. We could say assigned, we don't have to say.
Then don't do it, but, um. I just felt like that could be a little red flag for people to feel like there's, there's already things happening before they've had a chance to. Cause I give it, it's, it's always a heated discussion for sure.
Alright, let's see Brian and then Liz.
Nancy, I'm like holding my thought here. Yeah, I guess, I, I just, um, I guess I'm, I just caution you Nancy from like meeting with developers. I don't wanna set any sort of precedent here. I honestly don't even think that we should include the Kate Street or, um. Uh, the, the Parson Woods, um, you know, and I guess I would caution from saying that. Oh, you know, grandparents are moving in because grandparents unfortunately in our state are taking on a lot of grandchildren because of the fentanyl crisis. So, um, I, you know, I think, you know, from the, when I was in redistricting committee. I didn't think that this was gonna make a huge difference. I didn't necessarily agree with it at all. I didn't think it was meaningful in what we were doing. We were just sort of picking and then, you know, what are the buses gonna do in those situations? So I would just focus. I would say honestly, take this out and just focus on, we're supporting the modular classrooms. Um, the, you know, we've had them before, that, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna have four classrooms for Don Darrow. This is a temporary fix as we have a more meaningful conversation about redistricting, boom, done.
Thank you.
So, I, I, I mean, I think we do need to put out communication as well. Um, I, my suggestion is sort of the boots on the ground is the committee. So, my suggestion is the statement. I mean, this is a good beginning, I guess. And maybe that you guys can come up with something that, um. Is a little more, you know, kind of incorporating all the thoughts that we have. Put in here and, and then push something together that way. That'd be my suggestion.
If I could just ask if Nancy, cuz I wasn't really thinking I was doing that, but if you have modifications, cuz you take great notes. And then you can send it to Byron and myself and.
Well, what I was gonna suggest was that would, could maybe two board members meet with me on the next day or two. Will come up with a statement, uh, communication, sorry. Would the three of us like to get together and do that?
And I think we can take the input from the group, which is.
Yeah, and then we'll send it to everybody and then we'll send it out. Okay, alright, we'll, we'll talk at the end of the meeting, uh, to set up a time. Do we wanna finish out the motion?
We do have a motion, I believe the motion.
About the issuing a statement, no? Do we have to have a motion?
We do not.
Okay, we have a consensus that we're gonna put out a communication and Byron, Carrie and I will work on it. Does anybody, anybody else wanna work on it or what?
I, I'd like, as long as we're not, we're not.
We can have four, okay, so we'll, don't go at the end, we'll. Okay, set up a time, okay. Alright, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Nancy.
Oh, well, um, it's been an interesting two weeks with the uh, city council.
June, so June third.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if folks have, if folks have the opportunity to uh, be present, then it might be helpful in terms of. Making sure the budget is finalized in the way in which you wanted it to be finalized. Um, you don't have to come, you know, it's not a super long thing. It's get up to podium, Nancy was there for, you know, there for a bunch of meetings, I talked for two minutes.
I just talked about the budget. I didn't talk about the modules. I talked about how the six point five percent. Is what the school board really feels would be the best for our students. Um, so I didn't try, I, I almost started my speech by saying, I am so sick of talking about modules. But I didn't know that was. So I didn't, but if you wanna talk about the six point five, that would be great. You know, whatever you have desires, yes.
I would, I would share with you that that night there will be both. Um, public comment, just a three minute. Uh, coordinated stance, you know, trying to keep, what is it, the mayor uses the phrase, uh. Even, keep three minutes in your heart or something, uh, but they will also reopen the public hearing. On the budget, which I'm not suggesting anybody should speak all night, but. Um, if you, if you choose, if you prefer publicly at the beginning of the night. I, I assume public hearing will follow some more budget conversation that the council will have. But that public hearing will reopen and you'll have the opportunity to speak for as long as you like.
I can't recall a meeting where we had to meet and speak for thirty minutes during the public hearing. Talk as long as you want. We didn't even have a public hearing. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. This, this was a really good discussion. Okay, now we're gonna hand it over for another good discussion to Lisa with the legislative committee.
Okay, so we have two position statements on legislation for the board to consider tonight. If you didn't catch lower down in the agenda, in the committee update section, there is a link to the committee meeting minutes. Which includes the New Hampshire School Board Association. Write up summarizing the bills and their opinion on it as well as two bills that we got feedback from Nathan because they were related to finance. And the committee deferred to Nathan's expertise to determine whether to take positions on the financial bills that we reviewed. So, um, just to remind everyone, the board had set for, um, areas for the legislative committee to focus on. If we were going to consider legislative positions. And one was on, um, allowing local administrators and educators to set curriculum. The first motion in the packet from the committee is to ask the board to consider, um. Approving, I'm sorry, the first motion is actually not the curriculum one, I apologize. The first one is around building aid, which is under our, um. Mandate to look at legislation that will help fund construction and maintenance of public school buildings. I'm sorry, I have like too many different windows open here. Um, and on that one, Nathan did review it for us. And I did have his comments in the minutes for the committee. Nathan, you can stop me if I'm misquoting you, but I think your bottom line was this was a good start. Like it's not as far as we'd like to go in funding school construction in the state, but it restarts building aid and sends some money towards that. Effort that might hopefully send some funds to Portsmouth in the future for building construction. So we have a sample motion in the packet to um, seek approval from the board if anyone would like to make a motion around that. So that we can discuss that one specifically.
Motion to approve support as written for the. HB five forty-six.
Second.
So any discussions, Liz?
Um, it says the legislation restarts the state's role in funding school building projects. Is it supposed to be restates the state's role in funding school projects? Or is this restarting something that was there before?
Deferred Nathan, but my broad understanding is they haven't really been contributing to building aid for quite some time.
And, and to be, I, I guess I, now that I'm reading, now that I'm seeing that word come back to me, I, um, I, I should say this. There is a, the, there's a lengthy moratorium, ten, thirteen, thirteen years maybe, of, of no building aid programming, no, no funding. In the midst of, either at the beginning or at the tail end of that moratorium, there was a rewrite of the statute. And the program itself, which used to be essentially if locally you had an approved project. The formula said you got a certain amount of state support against the principal paid in your bonding for a capital project. The new program is essentially a competitive rating scale that, um, considers the importance of, um. Fire and life safety, but it penalizes for deferred maintenance and lack of attention to your own facilities, et cetera. Um, and there has been some, there have been some small dollars, say relatively. Um, that have successfully been awarded to a couple of schools. So restarting might, it was restart, not restate, restarting might, it's a little editorial on my part, I guess, because there is a program. It has been somewhat funded, but not to the point that schools can have any, any relative, um. Confidence that as they move forward to address the needs of their community, that they will have a fair, reasonable access, uh, our opportunity for funding. That they will have is the opportunity to land on a list where there's only a couple of schools that are gonna get funded and then we get in any given year. Um, and so all steps, all steps that move us towards a greater regular appropriation to fund. Ongoing projects creates more opportunities for more schools and communities to, to benefit, so. I don't know, I guess at this point if restart was fair, but I think, I think you can use it.
Happy to change it, restore or?
And how about advance? Does that work?
Increase allocation.
Can we just get rid of that sentence?
I think we.
I, I understood the meaning.
If I can just say, when we built our high school, we got fifty-five percent reimbursement from the state. When we built our middle school, we got thirty percent reimbursement and then we were informed by the state that we could get another three percent. Because Newington goes to uh, seventh, uh, uh, seventh and eighth grade. So a bill, a, a state building aid program. Uh, you know, in Massachusetts where I grew up, they built a middle school, they got ninety-three percent reimbursement from the state of Massachusetts. And we get, right now, we get zero. I like the word restart because it did exist before and it doesn't exist now.
Certainly not like it did once upon a time. Well, that's fine, yeah.
Any other discussion?
That we can vote? All, all in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Um, and then the second one from the committee for consideration by the board tonight. Is, um, a literacy program being dictated by the state. That might or might not be in line with the program that we might think is in the best interest of students. And that we want to use in our schools. And this was brought to us by a teacher for consideration. Um, and again, the background is all in the legislative committee minutes and so. Consider this one. To approve statement of opposition. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I know you mentioned that's in the minutes, but can you just speak briefly, um, to? Like where this was derived from, like, you know, is there, is there some? I mean, when I read it initially, it seems like there could be a benefit to having this legislation in place. Because it clearly states that a child would then need to be referred to special education services and kind of streamlined, so yeah, that, thanks Zach.
That's a fair question. We did discuss that in the committee and I think there are a lot of elements and I mean certainly Zach or Patty could speak to this. There are some elements in it that look good on paper. But it's more like, what is the detail and if we are going down a certain path that we believe is in the best interest of our students and our schools that are.
And I would think just theoretically, we don't, we don't want the legislature to legislate curriculum choices. Uh, not a good place to do that. It doesn't allow flexibility for professionals to, to do what they need to do. I mean, actually today's a great day for, a great day because, you know, federal court just overturned the divisive concepts, uh, law in, uh, New Hampshire. So, thank you federal court for, uh, trusting teachers to do the right thing. Um, and, um, but in that same vein, it's, we, we wanna maintain the ability of the professionals you hire to have flexibility. And not have, and again, this is not awful, everything that's in there, but in, as research changes and evolves. You don't wanna, it's like when we talk about policy, you don't wanna get locked into too small a grain size and policy, uh, here at the, at the school board level. Uh, you wanna give yourself flexibility. It's the same thing for people around the state, I think as a. I know as a leadership team and I think as a, as a legislative committee, I mean, I think we're committed to that idea that this is an overreach from the legislature.
I guess, so I guess my concern is that when you read it on its face or if a parent were to read this. I don't know that it necessarily feels like an overreach, like it might feel like an overreach to the school. And so I worry about representing where we represent the community and not just the school department, um, sort of taking a position on this. Um, because to me, when I read it, it really, it, to me, it says, you know, the instruction must include explicit systematic. Instruction and reading, I, I assume these are all things we're already doing. Um, you know, the only thing that I would see as extra is this general education tier two intervention referrals. Um, you know, basically getting kids in sooner if they are struggling in literacy. So I, I don't, I don't necessarily see on the face of this, uh, of what I'm looking at here where the issue lies. Um, and so I guess I, I, I'm concerned with us taking a position. Against it.
Um, I think my, this is not the bill, though, that what we have linked is the is the NHSBA commentary.
Okay.
The bill itself is more explicit, but also the what would happen, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but if this were to be passed, this then goes to the Department of Education for rulemaking around it, and they define that. So even if there is an explicit curriculum outlined in this, it, the start of this legislation would lead to a curriculum being defined by the Department of Ed.
Okay.
That meets X, Y, and Z criteria. I get that sort of.
That's correct. And if you click, if you go into the minutes and then click on the link on the bill number, that will take you to the actual full text of the bill. But there is a lot of vagueness around how it will be implemented, what curriculum will be chosen and considered permissible under the legislation. And that was the main reason that NHSBA opposes it. And also because it's a totally unknown fiscal impact for districts. So, you know, we're in the middle of doing a lot of curriculum planning and figuring out what types of literacy and math programs we want to do as a district. And having spent all that time and investment on training, the selection, and then rolling it out. Then we get something from the state that says, actually, we don't want that curriculum, let me want this other one. Then you've just kind of tossed out several years and a lot of money to kind of start over. So I think that's part of what the committee was discussing about it, if that makes sense. So it wasn't so much about objecting to the special education referrals, those happen and should happen when they're. But I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I was just gonna say, no, but I think we we went through that whole process and maybe for the next cycle, we want to review. We set legislative principles for ourselves, and that included empower local administrators and educators to set curriculum. Um, I think that this opposition reflects that set of principles that we previously had agreed to.
I guess I just wondered too, if a bill like this would require the state to fund special education services more if they're mandating that a tier two go in, no?
I love the mandate stuff without.
Yeah.
No money in this bill.
Okay.
Which is part of why it's being opposed by the School Board Association.
Okay.
Oh.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Post. Fiction passing.
I swear, Lisa, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
And thank you, Nathan, who had to do all of the hard work of figuring it out.
Okay, we'll move on to Pip again with consideration and approval of policies, first reading.
Yep, no.
Oh, wait.
You.
I need some summer permission.
Okay, yes. We have a motion. We have a motion for allow the superintendent to hire professional staff during the summer.
Motion to us.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I mean, is there going to be, as far as like hiring a new Nathan? Not that you could fully replace him, but is there going to be any, you know, given that the school board is working so like so heavily, heavy-handedly with, you know, with Nathan's replacement, is there going to be opportunity? If we do authorize you to do this, for us to, I guess, not have necessarily have a say, but I don't know if there's a hiring committee, like when we've hired principals or other, you know, larger administrative positions. Um, if there's a committee around that, and I guess, you know, what is this? If we do go ahead and say, yes, you could do this like we have in the past, you know, is there an opportunity to sort of, you know, see what the options are and, you know, even play any part in that, I guess?
So and then Nathan will, um, the answer unless something changes in the next couple of days is is your opportunity to be, we're going to present a candidate at the next board meeting. And this would be the person we want approval for. So that's when the, that's when that that position would come up. We don't anticipate any administrative positions that would be open over the course of the summer, that could change. And then again, we would ultimately be coming back. Well, in this case, Nathan's would happen before, this is going to be the last, this June eleventh meeting, it's really the in-between period that I'm worried about, so.
So this doesn't cover Nathan's position?
Nathan's positions come back unless unless something changes. Unless that, you know, the candidate that I've gotten the pipeline falls through, or you decide that you're not happy with that candidate anymore.
Alright, thank you.
Do we have a vote for Zach? All those in favor? Hi, any positive? Are you some good ones, Zach?
No pressure.
Consideration, approval of policies, okay, Pip, now it's your turn again.
Alright, so these are our policies that are back, are are here for the first reading tonight. The first is crowdfunding, which is not a policy that we had yet, so it's new, coming to us new from as a recommended policy by the NHSBA. And Nathan informed us that that I think he said he had brought this to the policy committee several years ago, is that what he said?
You dread, yeah. It came, it was being discussed while I arrived in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Was a topic then the policy committee worked on.
Okay, but we did not adopt it then. But in the meantime, uh, employees have been, have been crowdfunding, as have volunteers for our schools. And so we felt it was appropriate at this point to adopt a policy around it. The important part, I think, though, to point out at this point is that this policy only applies to people who are on staff, not volunteers. So that that is a whole other discussion to be had at some point. About PTAs, et cetera, because we know there's a lot of questions and concerns there. But this one only only impacts people who are employed at school. So the major components that we discussed were, and have written into the policy as it stands now, is that we felt it was important to streamline crowdfunding in a way that where we're only using at this point one platform for allowing it so that it can be tracked more easily and that it can be consistent across the board. And that platform that we are recommending is Donors Choose. We put that right in the policy. Did we do that?
It's the example that's referenced in the policy.
It is referenced, okay.
Based on the conversation, if I may, based on the conversation that that you folks had around the table. The agreement was to leave the language in there that came from the sample policy from School Board Association, which calls on the superintendent or designate to maintain a list of the eligible or available approved, sorry, the approved platforms. Right now, I think we'll start with just the Donors Choose, but rather than come back and change your policy later, policy committee agreed to leave the language that says the superintendent goes in the future and approve others.
That's right. Okay, so we didn't name it in the policy, but currently that's the one, the one and all that we have to use, yeah. Okay, thanks, Nathan. And then the other, the other area where we made some choices was around the amounts that would be approved by different means, so under a value up to five hundred dollars can be solicited just with approval of the building principal. And then the superintendent wouldn't need to review anything up or above twen- two thousand five hundred dollars. And then consistent with, I think it's, yeah, RSA, we have to have a public hearing for anything above twenty thousand dollars. So those are numbers that we worked through in the policy committee. And then the one other thing that that Nathan felt was important here was to emphasize prioritizing goods and services over cash. Because at in any situation, it's preferable for us to be receiving goods or services and not dealing with the flow of cash. So that's sort of an overview of how we came to what this policy looks like. And I will entertain any questions, or first I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, questions? Mary?
I'm just curious in the so is this how kind of things have been working, i.e. the me as a teacher sets up a campaign, the beneficiaries for the school district? Or are there also incidences where the funds are going directly to the educator? Like, does this change a practice that's currently happening?
I think in the absence of a policy, because I would say to you that the the best that we got in policy decision-making five years ago was we shouldn't be doing crowdfunding. But there was not a policy that said you can't, it just wasn't a policy that gave any guidance to good. It has gone on, and I think there have been multiple platforms used, and I think it has largely been to the benefit of the, or don't want to, to the benefit of the employee, not because the employee necessarily is benefiting, but because it was the employee's fundraising effort. And the best thing about Donors Choose is you donate to Donors Choose. There your five oh one C three, you write off your tax deduction, thank you very much. And then you designate where you want your donated funds to go. And those donated funds end up supporting a project request or, you know, fundraiser for something, I want a three D printer, I want this, I want not money, things. And when those, when the, when the request or the project succeeds, those things are delivered to the school and they are the property of the school because the whole program was run in the name of the school. But there's an approval process that we have to go through so that, for instance, a three D printer that might cost fifteen hundred dollars collects lots of donations. But the consumable you have to put in it for the rest of its useful life costs you five grand a year or whatever. So there's a process so that the administration and the budget by extension are on notice about things that we are choosing to do and add. So that we can, we can maintain those things, support those things moving forward. If a project through Donors Choose fails, twenty-five hundred dollar printer, we only raised fifteen hundred, Donors Choose doesn't just send fifteen hundred dollars and say, sorry, do whatever you can with this. Donors Choose closes the project, says that it failed to succeed and asks the donors to redirect their dollars to other programs, but to other, you know, to other requests. Much like our PTAs have been advised over the last decade, don't bring cash to the school, do something for the school, buy them this or pay that bill for them or what have you. It's this, this really lends itself that way. Then the tax benefit that that donors receive are provided from Donors Choose because they're five oh one C three for that purpose, and we're not really, we're a local community, but we are not, we're not taxed. We also are not charitable. So this is really works very careful, we're very careful. This, this works for the donor as well as for the, as for the, the city, the school department, the community.
Do you need to add some clarity around, like, I know some teachers use an Amazon wishlist or, you know, some teachers will post to Facebook, like, anybody have a used X, Y, Z, you know, from my classroom or anything like that? And so I guess I just wonder, you know, specifically maybe like the Amazon wishlist type of idea. I mean, that is kind of crowd crowdsourcing, I guess, instead of crowdfunding, I don't know. So I don't know, I guess I just don't want teachers to be like, oh, my gosh, I've been doing my Amazon wishlist every year. Oh, my gosh, I've been doing this other thing. And, you know, is this an issue now? Or, you know, I don't want to put a kibosh on, on, you know, you know, free things that we're getting for our school, essentially. And so what does that mean? Like, is there, was there any discussion around that or what does that look like?
This primary, I mean, the primary concern on this policy was money. And making sure that we have the ability, if someone is representing themselves as gathering money on behalf of the organization, the district for some purpose, that we knew where the money was. When did it go to? We had the ability to track it and and be aware of it and have some thoughtful sign off on what that money was going to be invested in. So because of the nightmare scenario, and we don't think, we don't have a bunch of examples, Alice, we don't. But the nightmare scenario would be somebody puts out a GoFundMe for, I want to get a printer. And they get two thousand dollars and that printer never gets purchased. That's the worst, right? That's the, now, we don't have a bunch of examples, we don't.
But I guess I'm just wondering if we need to add clarity in this policy that that doesn't cover things like, you know, crowdsourcing, such as Amazon, or, you know, the teachers need, you know, Kleenex for the classroom and they request it from this, you know.
I don't think, I don't think we want to go that deep right now. I think we just want to make sure we get the money under control. And so I understand the in-kind stuff is, is, you know, if an elementary teacher puts out a list and these are, I need more tissues and I need these other things, you could see that as a corollary.
Yeah.
I think right now we're taking one step.
Can we just? Can we make a communication to the teachers when we, I mean, is this a new policy? Yeah, that this just applies to these, and if you have any questions or something comes up, bring it to your attention and then you could bring it back to the board in case we need to amend the policy to add something else that we missed. Okay. Thank you.
How does this, like, a club raising money just, is it different?
Kids, I think what, no, don't believe, don't believe it was a volunteer thing, like the PTAs. And the Kleenex thing that we do in the, the teachers, I have to just, there are thirty seconds, say, when we drew the memorandum of agreement about the teaching, the working conditions for teachers in the middle of COVID, item number nineteen on the list was, the district will provide Kleenex for the classrooms. And I remember looking over at Kenneth, she going, what is this? So we don't provide Kleenex, and she said, we don't, he said, no, they do a Kleenex drive, they do a tissue drive every. I said, some of this stuff, you just have to live there, you got to know. How is it that I have a school budget of sixty million dollars and there's no tissues in there? So there's things like that that are PTA, that's volunteer, kind of driven by the, by the groups or the programs. But student fundraising is another category altogether. So clubs, student activities, many of which are done, I mean, not many, but some of which are through some version rally up that we were using for, those things are all similar platforms or competing platforms. That's another piece that I think the board can and should talk about at some point, but you have to be really careful there because those are student-generated for student-led, for student purpose, student benefit. And this, this wouldn't apply, this is really, this is really, I didn't get the printer I wanted in the budget, and so I want to go ask for it anyway. And I think part of it harkens back to the fact that we've been doing it. And in the very first conversations I walked into, there was a lot of discussion about should we be asking the same community that we tax? The things that we chose not to tax or still ask for, and yet we have a very, a very generous community that's happy to help with, and even someone looking for ways to help. So this was a way to put some safe bird seed, some, some rail, rail guardrails, just get started because we really need to put a policy to start something.
I, I think to Mr. Higginson's point, though, is that I kind of wonder if they're, I can't help it, I'm just so used to it, that's what I know you as. That's why I can't call you anything else, it's weird.
Teacher voice like.
But I think to his point, you know, is there a way to communicate that to the school district as a whole? Because I feel like looking at this policy, I, I, it kind of, to me, I would assume that it would include, you know, you know, clubs and whatnot, too, so.
Also fly out here, like I.
Yes. Yeah.
Take these notes and keep them out to people.
Okay.
This does deserve some roll up, some rollout.
Yeah.
We just put it up in the cloud and said we have policy. I think it's important to teachers now, because I've had them ask for five years. They've, I've had them ask and I've done a lot of this. And then hope that we didn't have a nightmare scenario.
Uh, Lisa. Well, I asked this when this policy first came up for reviewing policy committee, but I guess if we're doing a separate policy that will cover student organizations, PTAs, booster clubs, I think it's really necessary. And I also think it's part of that, we really have to take a hard look about how much we're asking donors to fund curriculum in our district because it's tens of thousands of dollars a year for like buses and field trips and like really big ticket items. And I understand we want to keep that budget number down, but we're putting a lot of it off on parents and it raises for me a lot of equity concerns. I mean, I'll happily donate when I can, anything a teacher says they need, I want to do it if I can. You know, but if we're trying to make this sustainable, like, I don't feel like we should be waiting for individual parents to pay for those big ticket things. So I hope that when we look at this policy, that in a way that applies to the PTAs and booster clubs and student organizations, that we really kind of keep that in mind. Because it's a lot of ask all the time. You know, and running PTAs, we always kind of hate that we're asking all the time and at the same time really want to help. The teachers don't want to ask because then you're putting, you know, kids and families in the position of thinking they have to pay money to go to a public school, which should never be the case. But it leaves us with, well, you're right, it leaves us with the kind of real equity question that I don't think we've tackled in the policy. So I just want to put that out there. Alright.
I also was thinking too, there's a. I also um, was thinking too, there's um, a. Students also bring, do these Donors Choose campaigns alongside their teachers and so. I guess I'm wondering, you know, it's asking for approval and all of this, so. I don't know, I, I guess I just wonder, like practically speaking. You know, it's great to have a policy, obviously, we want to cover this major printer, but I don't think that's really what's happening with these, some of these campaigns and. And so I. You know, the more that I'm thinking about it and, and the programs that I'm thinking of that I've seen from Donors Choose. I worry that there's this kind of overlap between students and teachers and then the request for approval and what that looks like. And so I don't want another policy that we're putting in place and then we just don't follow, um. But I also want to provide the flexibility, so. I don't know, I guess I just wonder if you, there could be like some sort of report back to policy, once this is implemented of what it's covering, what it's not covering. And, you know, where the gaps are and the concerns that are being bubbled up by teachers and students about this policy.
Well, I appreciate that was because actually this came up at our last policy meeting that we, that there's, there's a desire to. Implement some sort of system where we do exactly what you just said, which is to, to look at how, like follow up on our policies. When we either implement a new one or we make significant, significant changes to one. So that we can make sure that they're having the intended effect. Um, so I don't know the best way to do that, whether that's something the policy committee should do or. Um, whether we do that at a board level. But I, I do think that there's a need for that, not just for this policy, but lots of policies that, that have been implemented.
Could we do like an anonymous drop box or something, like a Google form? I don't know. Like, issue with policy, drop a Google.
Isn't that what, isn't that on Patty and Zach? Like, that's not, like, they do the rollout, they send.
Well, we're the ones creating the policy, I think, and so.
But then I think it would be to them to bring something to policy. I don't think we have to like dictate that, I think that's what will happen.
Oh, I see what you're saying, that it would just be, it would only be if they got feedback that it wasn't working.
But I think it, I do worry that it's the school board's responsibility to create policy, so how does school boards solicit feedback? Usually it's through public comment, but if we created some other special feature, you know, a button, like policy specific button, feedback button regarding policy. That, you know, I think that's something we could explore, a policy could explore.
Well, I'll say that at the end.
Shall we take a vote?
Yeah, I think we should. Um, okay, all those in favor of passing D F G A?
Please stepped out, but we have a vote, we have a positive vote, so, okay.
Um, alright, we'll move on to school safety. Um, which is EBB. This policy, Patty reviewed and determined was out of date and not reflective of our current practices. Uh, so she recommended that we adopt the sample policy. Um, in its place and that was the general consensus of the committee. So we're recommending it for approval. Um, as, as it is here, which is, which reflects sample policy.
Motion to approve EBB?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion about?
Just a quick question, was there like, did you guys go through and make sure that whatever is being titled within here is also what the title is? Okay, thank you.
That's why the change has to be made because what we were doing.
Yeah.
Was what we were supposed to be doing, but the policy didn't reflect what we were supposed to be doing, so backwards.
Makes sense.
Let's have a vote on that one, all those in favor? To emergency medical care.
Motion to approve EBBC.
Um, okay, this one um, was similar, it was also out of date and missing some um, important information. Um, and it also needed to be dual coded, so it applies to students and staff. Um, and also the title changed, as you can see.
Uh, Karen. Um, one change and then one question, and I can't, oh no, here it is, line twelve. Um, I would just recommend removing licensed practical nurse. Um, and just say school nurse, because the state dictates who can be a school nurse and who can't be a school nurse. Um, super minor, um, but then I had, I was curious about the naloxone stuff. Like, why is the superintendent procuring it and why is that really explicit?
What line do you want?
I'm sorry, fifty-two to, I mean, my, my assumption is that the supplies from the um. The supplies that the nurses have, the nurses procure. Or the head nurse, Karen, right now, would be the one to procure them. It just seems strange to me that this would designate, I feel like it should just be more specific to like the district. Can procure this medication if we need that. Um, but within the state, it's covered under a blanket, um. Uh, standing order, um, if people are, it, it's also available over the counter now. Um, or it was approved for over the counter, I don't think it's actually there, um, but also it's free for, from the state. Um, in the current thing, so it just, it makes.
You're wondering why the superintendent, superintendent is designated?
To procure it, okay.
I think, well, that did come up in our conversation and.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure.
You know, uh, and we did just, actually we did just do a, uh, an additional Narcan purchase, we just, we just did to augment a whole bunch. What's that?
Do not purchase it. I'm sorry, that was hard to.
Okay, so, so if we just change that to the district. Is authorized, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Do we, sorry.
And then my, and then the other question, which is a bigger one, but. Um, I mean, we train a lot of um, juveniles to administer naloxone and many of them carry that in on their person. Um, and so explicitly we say staff member um, here, um, but some um. People who have contacts with people who use drugs often have it and we, that's encouraged from a public health perspective. And so I didn't, um, I didn't know if we wanted to consider the school nurse or other. Properly trained something or properly trained person may administer it.
So coming from um, like an HR standpoint. My first thing goes to what's the liability if a student. Um, administers it and something happens.
Very little.
Okay, no, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, I'm. I mean, there's like no side effects unless you're, there's no effect unless you're, the person is using opioids.
Okay, well, I want to go back to, um, sorry, and maybe this doesn't, isn't relevant, but I remember we had this discussion. When we were talking about students carrying medication and whether or not they could carry. And I think we determined they were not allowed to carry Narcan. But. Administry, administer it, I guess, even became a process.
Or it's in a public access.
Yeah, I mean, it may be based on our other um, policies, it may be totally irrelevant. But I do also, I appreciate your.
Yeah, I think maybe just changing because it could be a community member, it could be like, I mean, just.
But is that something that we're, we as the school board are willing to take on as a liability?
I think it might be written that way because of the way it's coded and because of the purview of the board and what the board has jurisdiction over. So you can designate people within the school system to do things. But you can't say whether or not people outside of the system are allowed to do or not do things. So this is specifically saying who within the system you're authorizing and since you have. You, you have control in a way over staff members, you can tell them that they're allowed to do this, you're not just waiting for. You're standing around waiting for the school nurse to show up.
And there's a difference between giving permission versus like having a consequence. So like, if I were to administer Narcan in a school board meeting, then. It, it, this isn't like the consequences will be immediate suspension and detention. Um, so I think it's, I think it's just thinking in that, but that makes a lot of sense, so. But I would still, the, um, yeah, I don't know if you want to have the. Procurement thing.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, but I think that what this one, what this means is that. Uh, this superintendent is authorized, it doesn't mean somebody else isn't, right? I mean, we're just, we're just allowing.
We, you say in the first line, the board authorizes a district to obtain store and administer, so you're already saying the district can do it. And then you're getting more specific about the superintendent, so, I mean, I don't even think you need that line about procuring.
I wonder if that is directly connected, and I don't know the answer to it, maybe I should. Um, whether that language is pulled directly out of one of the RSAs. Down below, in a model language is, I don't know the answer to that, I can look real quickly to see.
Yeah, we can look into that, Lisa. Yeah, I think I raised this question when we were talking about the other sort of prescription and over the counter medication policy. Because naloxone is over the counter, there's no age restriction on who can purchase it, it's legal for anyone who needs it to have it and use it. And I know that there's federal protections from liability from administering Narcan. So I guess I'm just curious. Why we would want to limit availability of it if somebody, for whatever reason, needs it? Because I mean, the intention is to have it there when there is a need for it. And we don't want to encourage the use of opioids, but we also don't want to discourage people from responding to an overdose. So I guess I'm curious about. How we are accounting for the fact that there might be a student carrying this. Because maybe they need it or maybe they know somebody who needs it or they just want to have it in case. So, doesn't deal with students, right, but. No, and I think what you're speaking of refers more to our other policies about, so maybe it's worth checking back on that policy. To see where we are with that, because I know. I don't think we really completed that conversation. No, we never really did close the loop on that, and it would be legal, I think, for anybody to have it, I mean, it's. Okay, not an illegal drug, it's over the counter, I mean, it's Tylenol. But they're not allowed to carry Tylenol either. So. So I think we, we can, we can put that one back on the policy agenda to discuss that.
Liz, um, I guess I'm curious as far as our CTE students that are doing um, medical or um. Paramedical uh, training, um, I know that there's, like, I believe sixteen year olds can be certified. Um, paramedics, um, and uh, I, I mean, I know some schools offer such certification. I don't know that our school does necessarily um, within our program. And so I guess I wondered for those, those students and Carrie, you know, Carrie's, to Carrie's point, that some people actually are trained. Um, at, you know, under eighteen to administer, um, you know, or maybe, I don't know if there would be a certification there. So I guess I'd be curious, you know, are any of our students able to be paramedics? And therefore, you know, maybe this should say, you know, certified or trained staff or students and. You know, and as far as a policy going forward about Tylenol, maybe it needs to be, you know, certified. You know, or somebody that would be credentialed, I don't know. It, I get it, you know, obviously in my generation, the, you know, there was the cold, you know, Robitussin and, you know. Different um, over the counter medication that people were using um, off label for, you know, um, getting high. And so we want to avoid that, um, or, you know, or having a student administer a pill to somebody. So I, you know, this is a tough, tough subject, but I, I am curious about our CTE program and, and you know, what type of certifications some of our students could have. Um, around this.
We broadly, you know, students in the health services program, um, we were just working. Some of those students have the ability to do internships with, through hospitals. Uh, we were working on a ride along program with. With emergency services here in the community and ultimately that hasn't fully come around, at least for students below eighteen. Um, but yes, students can get certified as being a paramedic, depending on after.
So I think that goes back to what Patty was saying, though, that the school. That, that I think this policy covers the people who are selected and identified by the school to do that work. But it doesn't necessarily mean that someone else who's in this, who happens to be in the school and certified. Couldn't address an emergency. And I don't know, it, it seems like it's going a step further to suggest that the district would. Support that person in doing it.
And that's, I think my summary from that conversation is just that it doesn't, it's not prohibiting other people from doing it. It's more around the explicit permission of those identified and trained and I think we should move this forward.
Mm-hmm, alright, um, all those in favor of all the E B C J L C E first reading?
Hi.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Um, alright. Indoor air quality, E B B D. Um, this one, we had on, uh, we, we already has a policy, but the um. Water quality and access has been added to this policy. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, uh, so that's really, that's, that's all that's happened and the title has changed accordingly, um. Are there any questions about this?
Yeah, I'm still wondering why we've, we've eliminated some of the maintenance department requirements in order to meet ASRA standards and things like that.
Um, can you elaborate? I don't know what you're referring to.
So if.
By forty-six.
If I start to look at, at forty-six through.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yep, through fifty-one, we've removed some of those requirements and, I mean, the. I'll say RSA two hundred forty-eight is pretty weak, so is in terms of what it requires the board to do. But I think, you know, the board needs to consider that we should probably take a little bit of a, a step further. I mean, it literally RS, RSA two hundred forty-eight is literally a two-line statement. Terms of the board's requirements.
So by a step further, what would you like to see?
Well, I mean, I, I actually like what was in here before, which is, you know. That we should ask the, the maintenance department actually do those assessments that they maintain. Or at least try and align with ASRA standards on a pretty regular basis.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I forgot that, I think we, we just, because this had changed, we took the entire sample policy and replaced our existing policy with it. So that's why those have been eliminated, it wasn't specifically that we went and crossed out those lines. But that's fair, that we'd still like to see them then.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, it, it does seem like it's um. Differentials to the superintendent administration to set forth the practice in which. Um, that would happen, where it was before explicitly calling out, how it would happen, as far as the maintenance department to handle it. And I'm not saying I disagree, I'm just saying I think that in my head, that's like I'm clarifying like the policy change. Essentially deferential to the administration to specify like how it would go down. Um, but I, I think the, um, it makes a good point, we should consider in second. Um, in the, in the policy committee round, um, potentially being more explicit in this case.
Yeah.
Like, see, even the New Hampshire code of admin rules is pretty weak, in fact, all it does is really refer back to RSA two hundred forty-eight.
Okay, thanks, anybody else?
Oh, sorry, I should. I know when, so I know in, uh, in Vermont, Ash, there was a whole conversation around COVID filters. Uh, around ASRA standards and then there was this conversation where, um. We have a desire to move away from, there, there was a question as to whether or not group, which is an industry-based group. Had a conflict of interest in terms of the standard importance, they, they weren't presenting things that they, it was an inherent. Uh, interest in presenting standards that would require additional purchase of equipment. Uh, and so there was this whole discussion, I, I don't know what happened in New Hampshire, but I know during COVID, there was this big discussion about whether or not. ASRA was this, was the standard that should be utilized. Uh, due to that conversation, so I don't know, I don't know the history here, I don't know if that. Uh, due to that conversation. So I don't know, I don't know the history here. I don't know if that was part of. Why there's a, there's a change and you see Ash Ray not appearing in the, in the model policy. But I wonder, cause I know that is a conversation across the river.
I guess I would just move forward with the policy, recommended policy versus adding any more of these strike through things back in. Um, because again, I don't wanna be implementing policies where um we're not actually doing them. Like, I don't know if the superintendent. You know, or the maintenance department is annually assessing these things or. Super superintendent is addressing, eliminating emissions of buses, cars, delivery vehicles. Like, I don't know if the superintendent has. You know, not that it is time to do that, but like, I don't know if that's happening. And I again, don't wanna put another policy in place that isn't going to be implemented. Um, you know, or not implemented, but like actively. You know, something done with. So I, I would prefer just to move forward with what is being proposed and and eliminate everything that's crossed out.
All right, do other people have questions?
The only thing I was going to try to help with was to tell you that. The end, the annual indoor air quality. There's forty seven question survey inventory that is taken every year. And I. Once upon a time, it was done by maintenance. Now it's done, it's. It's recorded and submitted by the school principal in every school. I just, I pulled it up from the Bureau of School Safety and Facilities at the Department of Ed. That may be why the language changed in the sample policy from school boards, because. These come down through the state's. Portal through the online reporting system. It's a forty seven question. It's the forty seven question survey. It asks about. Policies and signage. It asks about how complaints are dealt with. Pest management on the grounds, fresh air return, flushing in the building, filtration, HVAC, mold prevention. Asbestos management, radon mitigation. There's some other.
Was it all process questions as opposed to like, what's your measure of that?
It's not a test, it's not a measure question. Yeah, like, it's all process to ensure that you have a. You have a process in place. If you have.
It's almost like an audit, it's like a financial, what's your process to sure this is supposed to.
So I think that, so that's a. Building principals are directed to annual investigate and report. Well, they are because they have to report it. To you, but also to the, to the department. That, that may be why. Because I'm guessing we didn't write that language that we crossed out. That language was there in the sample policy that preceded and doesn't mean you couldn't change it, but I think. School boards may have just chased the process that this department of energy.
And referenced where and this, though. Cause I don't think that that's referenced in here.
Air quality in their respective school buildings, line thirteen fourteen.
Well. Might I suggest that we, we approve this as, as a first reading and that we, that we discuss these concerns that have come up. At the policy committee. Before we bring it back to the second reading.
We're getting, you know, to bring back some, some deeper information.
Right.
To this second, second reading.
Yeah.
It should be there.
Okay. Um, all right, so we'll take a vote to move it forward for the first reading with. The comments taken under advisement by the policy committee. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Um, and thank you, everybody, for your input. This is really helpful to have people. Have people, uh. Really reading through these and making suggestions. Um, okay. Data and records retention. Um, this was another one that needed to have some updates to be brought up.
I'm sorry, in the packet from, cause I always download the packet from the school, the city website, so I know what the community is seeing. Um, where that policy should be crowdfunding is put in again. Um, and so I don't know that that policy is in the city packets of what I'm looking at right now.
One up that's from online and I have. I have what Vip seeing.
Yes, okay, I mean, where is it? Is it?
On this, on the city website for this meeting.
Yeah, what um page is it? It's just might be off, it might just be mixed up. No, I'm talking about the um packet. Like what page of the packet?
I think the link works on the posted.
Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah, maybe try the link from the agenda.
Okay, but the document's not inserted into the packet is what I'm saying. So I don't know if we can move forward with discussing it, if it's not in the packet.
Still linked on the agenda though, appropriately. On the city posted one.
That which one are we on? Data retention?
Yeah.
Um, is there a motion to approve this one? For first reading?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, uh, did you find it?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Um, so, let's see, um, as I was saying, we, we made some adjustments to bring it up to date with state law. Um, the major discussion that we had was that there was a. A chart that's many, many pages um that was included in this policy, and we discussed whether to make that its own policy as an R version, which. Is sort of the code for like an, a, a form that accompanies another policy. Um, but ultimately, we decided that it. The chart itself didn't have to be a policy at all or part of the existing policy. Um, and instead, um, it will be kept as a procedural document. And uh, that it wouldn't be, it would no longer be part of. Each. The chart, yeah. Um. So that was the major. The major discussion and update that was made to that. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, so as an attorney, prior to becoming a school board member, I had issues with. Uh, and this is, this is maybe a separate issue, but it kind of within the same policy. Um, I had issues with um FERPA requests. Um, to one element, one elementary school had a document on the website that you could fill out for a request for. Records. One school didn't have any document um that you could request records, so. Um, it was definitely an issue. And so if we could have some sort of uniform document um for FERPA requests or records requests at all. Schools, um, if a parent were to request a child's record. Um, you know, oftentimes they're requested for, you know, litigation or, you know, somebody's in a divorce and, you know, is the kid doing well in school? What's going on with the special education plan? Parents don't agree about. Like whether the child should get services or not. And so being able to have like a clear form, um, it was just odd to me that one school had a form. I only had looked at a couple of schools, but one school had a form and one school didn't have any sort of formal process.
I. Can understand the, the difficulty in updating the table. But at the same time, I feel like there's no detail on timeframe in the policy. And um, I don't know if there's like a middle ground that can be. Not super onerous, but that so people would know, for instance, that records are kept for. Term of employment plus six years and. You know, six years post. Age of majority, such a weird term.
Right, so sort of a, a summary of some sort or a statement of.
Yeah, I think it's really just those two things, like when, when would my records as an employee and when would my records as a student be?
Okay.
Cause I can see how it got really. Detailed into all of the things. But now the vagueness of the like. Records are held for a certain amount of time. Becomes too vague for me.
Yeah, makes sense. Lisa.
In terms of just admitting liability, which we love to talk about, you would definitely want to have a consistent practice across the district that everybody knows and follows. Cause if somebody inadvertently does something differently than others, that can open the district up to legal issues around. You know, right to know and records that people may or may not have access to. So. I think, yeah, like maybe finding a middle ground is important. Or maybe just saying that, you know, superintendent or designated will. Distribute to whoever's in charge of keeping the records, what the. Practices should be for maintenance and destruction, just so there's a clear. Guide line. And I think it would be a bad thing to incorporate that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Sorry, the only thing that I'm thinking of is just, you know, in my past experience, um, you know, oftentimes things are kept on a cloud. So I think we're talking about electronic media and like overriding and whatnot, but I, you know, I guess I wonder if maybe further conversation needs to be had or could be had around. A cloud and files and, you know, when you are sharing a cloud across the district, you know, oftentimes in other. Forms of government, a cloud is shared across multiple departments. And who sees certain items on the cloud and what's available. I don't know if there needs to be any further discussion or policy around it, but I've seen. Some, you know, concern with, you know, obviously. A lot of information is confidential, and so how is that shared across the cloud? And you know what that looks practically, but I'm just throwing that out there.
I would just say quickly on the chart, I mean, the charts. It's a reference, but it's all reflective of existing state and federal law. So, these are all things that. Each of the different departments who are responsible for these things have to be as a result of federal law. These are. Most, most of these things are things that folks in those departments understand very well and through other means. Are things that are necessary to do, and you can keep it if you want to, but these are things that, uh, these are part of, parts of the operation, people know.
All right, thanks. Um, let's put it to vote. Um, all those in favor of passing E H B? For first read?
Hi.
Oh. Any opposed? All right. Um, instructional needs of individual students, IFA. Um, this one, oh, I'm sorry, wait, but is there a um motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Okay. Thanks, okay. Um, this one has an updated title and um. Just the addition of Portsmouth. To the uh existing. Sample policy. Any questions on this? All right. All those in favor of passing it over first read? Right? Any opposed? All right. Really, it's getting late.
Oh, this is just a great.
Use of Portsmouth Schools Facility, KF. Is there a motion to pass for first read?
So most negative.
Thank you. Um. Okay, this uh. Policy, as you can see, is not changed all that much, but I would say the. The um major. Um. The major changes are um. Were in line with a change that the city council made recently, um, which is to. To not allow the use of or the rental of facilities to um for partisan political events. And um, that is what the, the major. Content change that has been added, although it's still, it remains somewhat consistent with what the policy already included, which was um. That, I can't find the exact line, but um that if, if, if it were reasonably, if it were a reasonable concern that rioting or picketing might occur at an event, we would not rent to. Um, that group or for that event. Um. So we felt that. At this point, unfortunately, renting um. For any political events could. Result in rioting or picking. Question?
That's left open the exception of. The sitting, sitting political leaders having the opportunity. Visit. Uh, places, yeah, right.
Yeah, I think it was campaign events. So that does leave that open. And then um I will just say that there were a few other changes. That Nathan recommended in terms of um. Making our rentals go a little more smoothly and avoiding some of the challenges we faced in the past. So if there anything we do like to say anymore about that.
I, I think that. Really, the, the, the substantial change is not really all that substantial. It's that. That sentence added is it was just referencing in one thirty one and one thirty two, and that's simply because. Um. Although there, there is some. Some history. Some in, um, instances in the past, somewhat distant past now that. Um, campaigns have, have taken up space. And um. And you must our facilities. It's not consistent with. Our city leadership is going in terms of the use of city facilities. And. And uh anecdotally, we've not had great success. We've not had great experiences in terms of. Uh, the events going off, well, uh. Uh, us receiving all payments that were due and expected, so it's um. And. And only because as we launched through the primary season, we were inundated with calls and requests. Which we fielded candidly or honestly with. Hey, we built the schools for kids and we've got varsity athletics and we've got. You know, the sub varsity and the elementary schools are used on the high school gym on Saturdays and total. But as we contemplate another general election and the future, it would help, I think, to very clearly state. What it does in line with one thirty one, one thirty two. So that's. If, if you think that's substantially different than what the rest of that. That section speaks to, then I guess that's it. The rest of them are fairly. Um, limited in terms of just reword.
Listen, um, I guess I just have questions about like clubs and this, at the high school. I mean, you know, I think some of them could be considered political in nature. You know, um, I don't know exactly which clubs are, but you know, I, I mean, I think we can all think to a few, yeah.
This is only for rentals of the facility.
So, but what if one of the clubs wanted to have an event or something like that? Like, wouldn't that fall under this too?
It, it does not um increase school sponsored events.
Okay.
To the extent, to the extent that it was us, our kids, one of our clubs, who are an advisor and. You know. Conducting themselves in a way that, you know, represented. Any. But a, a group of students. Who had a political cause, who decided to gather and want to rent the facility, I think probably not. Cause that would not necessarily be a school, school event, a school sponsored event, it would be. School age students getting together to do something and. Um, and if it, if it didn't otherwise qualify, it wasn't eligible.
Like the young Democrats of, of Portsmouth High School want to invite candidate blank. Or the, you know, the young Republicans of Portsmouth High School want to invite candidate blank. It wouldn't be a loophole. To be like, oh, now we can, now we can have a partisan event because we've got four kids from high school signed off on it.
I, I don't believe we have any political.
We don't right now, right?
You could consider some political, I would think, if, you know, the gay straight alliance or, you know, eco club. I mean, some of these I think could be considered. You know, political in nature. If you were to have somebody that was an advocate on one side or the other, so to speak, um. I guess, so that's, that's what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking about this, not to say they're left or right or whatever or partisan, but. I guess I'm, um. I'm, I just don't wanna loop in any of.
That is why we included the word partisan.
Okay.
Um, and, and it's specific to campaigning. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Maybe it's not. It's including campaigning. It's not just. Um, please.
I have boring questions. Um, in line nineteen. Are we intending to still say athletics slash recreation director? Cause those are two separate people now. Um. Right? Cause we separated.
That's an overs, that's an oversay.
And then just a question about moving Lister to community campus. Is there anything that we need to clarify in the language around? Like some of those fields, I think, are technically not school. Property, they're city property. I think that we're covered in this, but I just. Curious if there's anything you need to look at in the language there.
I think we left. Robert J Lister as the name as opposed to Sherburne School or Community Campus. To clarify that we're talking about the space that houses Robert J Lister. And you're right. Athletic fields are, from a city's perspective, very clearly either recreation or school. And so. Um.
Okay.
I think this language is okay.
Okay.
Although I definitely need to think of recreation director.
All right, any other questions? All right, um, so we will take a vote and all those in favor of passing KF for its first reading. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. That was the last policy.
Besides gifts and donations.
Oh, it's so close, it's so close.
We did the second reading, I forgot. Okay, sorry, gifts and donations.
Uh, motion to pass K C D.
This is a second reading.
One off.
Um, is there a second, is there a second for the motion? Um, okay, this is a one off because the only changes that were made to it were the um very. Simple ones you see in the fourth paragraph, um, where we changed the amounts of um. Of gifts that would trigger a need to um. Be approved. So. The um, the donation amount um. That would be approved, be able to be approved just by the superintendent has been changed from five hundred to twenty five hundred. Um, and then. Um, and then those gifts in excess of twenty five hundred would have to be approved by the board and uh. For uh the our existing RSA gifts over twenty thousand would have to be um approved by the board with public notice. With a public hearing first. Um, and then we did discuss a little bit about the fact that we would like to be um notified of gifts and so we. I believe changed that from. We we added the at least quarterly, right? Because we thought if if gifts came in. If if for some reason we received substantial gifts that we would, we'd love to be notified before the quarterly um time period, but. Um, it's pretty consistent with what we had before.
Are you on line seventeen, Chip? Yes, this is only a report.
To clarify that it's not actionable.
Only comma, I think, a report. Because a comma missing.
I see, okay.
Question.
No, I think you might be right, though. I think that we we moved the. At least quarterly for informational purposes, and then I think it should just say to the school board. Right, doesn't say at least quarterly. Quarterly struck out.
At least quarterly is. In the beginning of line seventeen, it says.
Shall prepare, yeah, I think, I think we were supposed to strike only a, I see, okay, report.
Superintendent shall prepare at least quarterly for informational purposes only.
I got a question. Um, isn't this based on an RSA? Like, isn't that why we're increasing the amount?
Our amounts are based on a change.
Okay, um, can we make sure we include that RSA down at the bottom, like we do in other policies? Okay.
You wouldn't have got a chance to have a public hearing on Kelly Clarkson if you had. You had a public hearing, I'm saying you would have been under the wire, under the new rules, you would have just, you just would have acknowledged it, no public hearing, so.
All those in favor of passing C, I'm sorry, K C D in a single reading?
Hi.
Hi. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Now we're done with the policies. And if you want, you can read the policy committee meeting minutes as well.
Yes, thank you. That was a very, very good report. We appreciate all the hard work you do cheering that committee. Um, okay, we're up to committee updates. We have the policy committee, as Pip just mentioned, the legislative committee, which Lisa submitted, and teaching and learning, which Patty submitted. So everybody take a moment to review those. Um, okay, future and agenda requests, please get those to Brian and me and we'll get them in a agenda meeting. We'll reopen the public comment. Is anybody here for public comment?
I guess we still have future agenda requests.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry, I didn't look up. Pip, Lisa, Zach, buddy, you want to go first?
Mine is a committee update.
Oh, all right, why don't you go first?
Uh, really quickly, I I just wanted to say broadly. That uh I've been appreciating it over the last several meetings. I definitely appreciate tonight the um. Uh, you're functioning at a real high level right now compared to where we have been at certain points along the way. Quality of the committee work that's going on, the um, the time people are putting in, the detail. Uh, that's going into the quality of the conversation and just it's um. You, I don't know, anyways, I I just didn't want to just let it slide by that there are, there were times where our meetings would not look like this. Um, and that's a lot of, a lot of work by those of you who are running committees and who are invested. Um, in um helping do that lift and then the quality of the. Of um how you're all communicating and the respectfulness you have for one another, so um, don't. Uh, I just didn't, I just. It it that doesn't automatically happen without all of you doing a bunch of different things you're doing, so just wanted to acknowledge it and say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lisa, did you have something?
Um, I mean, I brought it up before, but I'm counting down to the last day of school right along with my children and um. Wondering what the plan is for the retreat.
Yes, we picked a date, did we?
Uh, okay.
We did, yes, in our agenda setting meeting, we picked a date, hopefully it's going to be um acceptable to everybody. And I think it's August.
Yeah, I I'm not gonna be here August fourth, Nancy.
No, August fourth.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here August fourth. And that's a Sunday. August fourth is a Sunday.
Want me to give you another pep talk? Would that help?
That would, that would not. Considering there are three birthdays on the fifth in my family. Not gonna fly real well.
It was August fourth.
That was a Sunday, this year's calendar.
If it's in the conflict, could we use the July, we use the July date? To get some minimal business done and then use that around.
Planning was, I would like to have everybody come to my house and we'll have a barbecue. So we'll start about eleven o'clock in the morning, break about twelve thirty, twelve, twelve thirty, have lunch and then. Celebrate some more.
Wait, on a Sunday?
Uh, it doesn't have to be a Sunday, we can do, why doesn't everybody pull up their calendars?
Um, I don't know, I didn't mean to have us spend like a really long time trying to have everybody read their calendar right now, we just.
Well, we need to pick it.
I'm not available uh July twentieth to August sixth, so.
We could, I mean, we could also utilize a tool. I mean, we are, it's not, it's not a violation of. Uh, you know, open meeting, a lot of right to know for us to have communication back and forth about dates. So you don't have to necessarily do it right now, you could do all that through email and that's not a violation, that's something you can do.
I mean, I do like this idea of of piggybacking off of what we already have scheduled.
What do you mean?
Like if the July ninth, school board Tuesday night in the middle of July, we're coming in for a seven o'clock meeting, why not? Do a retreat from five to seven before that?
People think that idea.
I think you should go back to, we should do this asynchronously. Um, I think we should take exact suggestion and use a tool to find a date.
Cause I do like your idea.
Can you and Brian maybe get together like a handful of dates and then I can send them out to people?
Yeah, or we might use a tool.
Oh, I meant on a, I meant on a tool, I would send them, but at least you two have to be there, so we might as well start with the two of you. Okay, we'll do that.
Actually like the idea of having it on the same date as a meeting, because if those are dates when we already have them on our calendars with the intention to be available.
Previously, we can have a delay meeting, so I mean, this, we could. You just refocus it in a different way.
That's a good idea, so. But we'll get back to you, well. Okay, did anybody else have something? Yes, Carrie and Pip.
Uh, not to put him on the spot, but Nathan, your report is, was there like maybe a brief year end report that could happen at the next meeting?
There, yeah, I was actually planning on sending one into.
Yes, okay, that was my agenda request, because I think that would be a great way to end the school year.
Yeah, right when he's wrapping up all the classwork he's getting.
In every picture.
Nathan, you're with us another year though, correct?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
You can do two more.
Be able to do two more if he doesn't pass that class.
I just wanted, I just wanted to put uh as a future agenda item so that we didn't discuss it too much during the other discussion that we're having. Um, this concept of having a follow up on on implemented policies and getting reports back on how that, how those are lying. So, yeah, I think there were some ideas circulating that didn't want us to take up time then. So I'm hoping maybe we could just have a brief discussion about the best way to do that.
I.
Yes.
I guess, you know, not to like, not, I'm sorry, Nathan, that I'm gonna say this, but. I think in the past, we've had a student representative be on the board for multiple years. And then we're, and now we're asking Nathan to be, Nathan's gonna be on the board for multiple years, and so I, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about representation. And opportunity that we're providing to other students. Sorry, Nathan, you're welcome to come to any meeting, but you know, I guess. It it did kind of draw a concern for me in the past and now we're sort of talking about it again in the future and I don't know. You know, I think we have a policy that has a representative. We don't necessarily say who, but um, you know. I mean, obviously you're in all the pictures, so you know what's going on, so it's great to have you, but.
Like, we still have elections every year.
So are you elected to this position?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just. Okay, I just want to be sure they're not just like rubber stamping like this, having the same person for multiple years. Yeah, okay, nobody wants it, is that really what's going? All right, just wanted to be sure.
Okay, are we all set? Do we have a motion to adjourn? It's only in person, there's no one here, so we'll close the public comment.
Sometimes we don't have to suspend the rules and.
Right. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.